Welcome to the Hamilton County Commission Staff Meeting, April 11th. And we're going to have everyone introduce themselves on the dive.
Kristi Rachel Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall, Dumas Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Ludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
Well, we want to welcome everyone. We've got an action-packed staff meeting. This week is Greater Cincinnati Realtist Association Week. And we did something different this year. They contacted our office and asked about doing a government day. And usually, they do it down at City Hall. And I said, "You gotta come see what we're doing at the county. We're doing a lot of great things at the county." And so, they said, "What are we going to do at the county?" So today is a first in history that the Realtists have had their government day here. And had a lot of great speakers. I had a chance to speak with them. But we also had Robert Bell, our Equity and Inclusion Director. We had Laura Runner from the Port Authority. Bridget Kelly, who is our new auditor. I'm trying to think, did you have anybody else? And J.R. Foster also is a speaker who has gotten the first-ever African-American commercial real estate, black-owned company to do a real estate deal for the county. So, we got a chance to share from the administration and from our board. This board has been very bold with affordable housing that we've put a lot of money toward, as well as other initiatives. Our new MBE and WBE program. We've never had one in the history of the county. People were being left behind, and we've been working to make sure that it's one Hamilton County and people can participate. I always say, "No taxation without participation." Taxes will be due soon, and everyone will be equal on that day. But every other day, they seem to tell us we got to fill out paperwork to see that we exist, but they find us on tax day. So, we can't be equal on tax day and unequal every other day. So, we're working really hard. We've got a lot of great things we've been doing. Of course, we've got a lot of work to do, but we have, our board has been doing a lot of great things. We're going to have a presentation by the Cincinnati Realtists. President Derek Dansby, and I'll call him up to make his presentation on behalf of your organization.
Thank you so much, President Reese. Madam Commissioners, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to be here today. As President Reese mentioned, this is a very historic day for our organization, I believe. This is the first time we've ever had an opportunity to present in front of the board. So, we're excited about that. So, I've got a brief, but yet detailed presentation I want to run through real quick and run and show you some of the people who are involved and the folks that really kind of make our organization go and thrive. Thank you for kind of introducing this, and thank you, President Reese, for allowing us to have this opportunity. As you mentioned, we typically do this government day at City Hall, down at the city of Cincinnati. And we just had some conversations and thought that, you know, based on what we do as real estate professionals, that to be here at the county was really a better fit for us. And it has been a jam-packed day and a wonderful day. And it would not be possible if it wasn't for you, President Reese. So, thank you so much for your help with this. This is just one event of a week-long worth of events that we have going on. We are one of 88 chapters throughout the country. We are all chapters within the National Association of Real Estate Brokers, or called NARAB. So, we all do Realtist Week at the same time, the same week, to try to help raise awareness on what we do, who we are, and really try to help generate business for our members. So, yesterday, we were at the Mayweather Boxing Facility, working out and getting our health and wellness in and learning that we got to be a fighter. We're going to have to be in physically good shape. So, we had a wonderful day there. Tomorrow, we'll be doing a cleaning, community cleanup project. We've got some continuing education that we're going to be doing on Thursday, a mixer on Friday, as well, one of the, as well as our spiritual day, because spirituality is a very important component to our organization. And we'll be wrapping up that. But we're also doing a homeownership fair, but I'll talk about that a little bit later. If you want, you can find us online by going to our Realti, our website, cinsirealtists.com. We've got a lot of information on there. All of our meetings and events and programs are on there. You can also follow us on social media as well, at Cincy Realtists on Instagram, Twitter, as well as on Facebook, at Greater Cincinnati Realtist Association. I want to kind of start with our history. You know, I came to the city of Cincinnati from Mansfield, Ohio, to study history at the University of Cincinnati, so history is very important to me. NARAB was founded in 1947 because a number of GIs were coming back from World War II and were looking to purchase homes. But because they were African-American, they couldn't find any homes. Either they wouldn't have access to them, or due to redlining, they were not allowed to live in particular areas and zones. So, you kind of have to understand, back then, you know, today, you know, someone looks on Zillow or Realtor.com and they call their agent and they say, "Hey, I want to go see this house," and then we set up an appointment to go see it. But back then, things were a little different. You had to find an agent who would work with you, who would be willing to do that. Well, black agents weren't allowed to be a part of the National Association of Realtors. So, we couldn't get access to homes that were owned by, by white families. So, we created our own board, and we call ourselves the Realtists. And we created our own organization, which is the National Association of Real Estate Brokers. We are affectionately known as NARAB. Now, one of the founders, there were 11 founders, one of the founders was Mr. Horace Suddith. Mr. Suddith was a Walnut Hills real estate professional, investor, businessman. But he was one of the founders of this national organization, and we believe that him founding this organization is one of the reasons why we are such a strong, strong organization. Our organization stands for two big, big things. First of all, democracy in housing. Secondly, we are unapologetic about our desire to increase black homeownership. We feel that increasing black homeownership will increase black wealth, which will then allow our, our individuals and families to grow and flourish economically. It was not really until, well, I'll get to that. But so locally, GCRNA, the Greater Cincinnati Realtist Association, we fall into those same attributes. We want democracy in housing. We want to increase black homeownership rate. And a lot of times, when I talk to people and I say, well, they ask me, "Well, what's GCRNA, what's NARAB?" I kind of say, "Hey, well, think about NAACP, except as it relates to housing. We are the gatekeepers, we are the freedom fighters, we are the advocates to ensure that there's black housing in the greater Cincinnati area." Now, we did not do this alone. It didn't come up out of nowhere. As I said, I'm, I'm a historian, so I like history. Mr. James Alexander was one of our key, key contributors to our organization. Mr. Donald Spencer was actually the first African-American that was allowed to join the Cincinnati Area Board of Realtors, and that was not until the late 1960s. So, from '47 all the way through the end of the 60s, we were basically redlining out of buying properties, which means it wasn't really until the last 50 or 60 years that we've had an opportunity to really equally play on a level playing field. And still, that playing field is still not as level as we want it to be, and I'll touch on that in a little bit. But if there was a patriarch of our family, if there was a person that got the biggest plate, the biggest piece of chicken for every meal, it would probably be Mr. Bob Lang. Every meal, it would probably be Mr. Bob Lang. Mr. Lang was a tremendous icon, a tremendous leader, a tremendous mentor to myself and other Realtists in this room, and you as well, President Reese. So, it's really his spirit that a number of us are still involved and actively involved with this organization. I want to take this opportunity to recognize some of our past presidents who are here today. If you all could stand and be recognized. Behind me, I have Mr. Jerry Isom, who is not only a past president, he's president of the Ohio Realtors Association and was former president of the Region 8, which we are a part of. You see our Alexander family, the lineage still carries on. Mr. Steve Alexander is here, and Ms. Anita Alexander is also here. Mr. David Beard, who was not only a past president, but is also currently serving on the board and is on our Board of Revisions. Mr. Al Roster is here, who's also our chairman. Mr. Martin Rutland is our, not only a past president, but he's a chair of our, of our Ohio Realtors Association. And I believe Sharif, is he still here? Yes, Mr. Sharif Sharad is also a past president. And it's because of their hard work and their dedication to this organization that we're able to be here today. So, I just want to thank them publicly. We also have a dynamic Board of Directors, none of which are paid. We have a great, great team. If you all could stand and be recognized. I mentioned our chairman, Mr. Al Roster, who really makes sure all of our boxes are checked. Our, our treasurer, Mr. Dan Beckley with Fifth Third Bank, couldn't be here. Is Mr. Michael Glenn, is he still here? Okay, Mr. Glenn is our Assistant Secretary, Assistant Treasurer, excuse me. We also have Ms. Felicia Bell, who is our second vice president and is the coordinator of this educational event that we have today, as well as our homeownership fair. We also have our two dynamic secretaries, Ms. Eileen Jimenez, as well as Ms. Adrian Shipman. And those two ladies really make sure that we dot all our i's and cross all of our t's. And last, but definitely, well, I'm sorry, I can't also forget about our other board member, Ms. Africa Wallace, who's also here as well and is president of our local women's Realtors Group. And last, but definitely not least, Mr. Marcus Parrish, who was our first vice president and will most likely succeed me as I exit out of my role at the end of this year. So, thank you all for your hard work. About maybe four years ago, we decided that we needed to really kind of reorganize our organization and really kind of focus our organization as we were moving into a new millennium. We went through a long strategic planning session, and these are the five strategic objectives that we created, and it has really launched our organization to becoming one of the larger organizations, not only in the state, not only in the region, but in the country. Just to give you a profile of who we are, and that slide, that slide is actually outdated now. We actually have 152 members of the Greater Cincinnati Realtors Association. Our members include Realtors like myself, lenders, appraisers, inspectors, investors, micro-investors, contractors, plumbers, electricians, roofers, you name it. We are here, we are a full-fledged real estate organization. We are a 501(c)(3), we're a 501(c)(6), and we are in good standing, and we are really here to help, which I'll talk about later. Last year, we were listed as the 12th-largest chapter in the country, but I believe now with our new numbers, I think we're probably top seven at this point. Last year, a majority, as I mentioned, we have Realtors in our organization. The majority of our, majority of our members are Realtors. We did 841 transactions in 2022. Of those transactions, we did over $200 million in sales. So, each of our Realtors are doing about 11 transactions per year with an average sale price of $244,000. So, we are doing a tremendous amount of work in the real estate industry. So, the benefits of membership. You know, we want to make sure that, first of all, that we're networking with other industry professionals. We want to make sure that we're doing business with ourselves and amongst our group and with other folks and making connections to other opportunities, which why Government Day here today was a tremendous opportunity for us, to have a chance to talk to the, to the port and to learn more about how we can do more business with the county is really at the top of our list of benefits that we have for our members. We have local and regional and national conferences. These are great ways for opportunities for us to network with other Realtists throughout the country. It also provides us with great learning and training opportunities that had we not gone, had we not go to those, we wouldn't be able to get those here locally. We also, also bring back those trainings and those training and development to our local real estate professionals who weren't able to make that, kind of each one, teach one thing, where we're, we're, we're learning peer-to-peer. We learn stuff, if I learn something in, in Tampa at one of our national conventions, I want to bring it back to make sure all of our other Realtors know that as well. And then, just beyond that, we have a referral network. We can refer business to anyone here in the state or anyone here throughout the country. And with that, that provides us with the opportunity to not just be a positive impact from a real estate perspective here locally, but throughout the country. One of the other things that we've done is we create our own title company. So, we've got a 501(c)(3), we've got a 501(c)(6). We've got our own company as well. We're making our own money. That allows us to be independent, and it's called GCRNA Title. It was a partnership that we're doing in collaboration with Leo Grody Title. So, anytime we've got folks here who are Realtors, who are using GCRNA Title, every time we sell a house or we use the title service, we get 49% of those proceeds. So, you know, that allows us to be able to do things without having to come and ask, without handout, asking for money. We've got our own income sources, and we're trying to really, really grow GCRNA Title. We've reached out to a variety of community partners that you'll see on the slide here today. Housing Opportunities Made Equal, CMHA, CAA. We've got a great relationship with our local board, the Realtors Alliance of Greater Cincinnati. We've done volunteer work with Project Connect. We've worked with, working in neighborhoods to try to help them train homebuyers that come through their program. So, as we are continuing to expand what we're doing with our programs and services, we're utilizing these partners on an ongoing basis. One of the biggest things that we realize is that if we're going to have an impact on increasing the African-American homeownership rate, we need to be in the business of training our people. Couple years ago, the city of Cincinnati was doing some homeownership fairs, and we saw it as a great opportunity for us to continue the homeownership fairs, not just once or twice a year, but now four times a year. So, on a quarterly basis, we do a homeownership fair. Last year, we had nearly 400 people who came to our homeownership fair. We did one in January, and there had, we had 175 individuals who registered for that event in advance. We have another one coming up this Saturday, and it's going to be at the Evanston Rec Center. We've got live remote with some local radio and media, so we're doing everything we can to try to promote the fact that homeownership is real. Homeownership is attainable. Homeownership is something that if you have the right guidance and the right support system, that we can get you to, and that's why the Realtists are here. So, why do we do that? If you look at the graph here, you can see on the far right-hand side, it's a cool little pointer, on the far right-hand side, you can see that the white homeownership rate nationally is right around 74%. You could also see the next bar over, the black homeownership rate nationally is right around 44%, which actually went up over the last couple of years. Unfortunately, here locally, our homeownership rate has gone down. We are now at a 33% homeownership rate amongst African-American families. That's 10% below the national average, and that's almost 40% below the national average amongst white families. And that's something that, if we don't start working on that right now, we're going to, in 10 years or so, I would project that the homeownership rate in the county amongst African-Americans is going to be right around 25%. And until we start building more middle housing and making lending more readily available for our families, we're going to be in trouble. Speaking about lending, I have some HUND data that shows that there was a total mortgages of 8,800 individual mortgages done over the, over the last year. Only 1,000 of those were African-Americans, which means that although a majority of our population in the county are black, only 11% to 12% of the new lending for home, home buying, when the mortgage lending, are going to African-Americans. That's something that we have to get a handle on. The denial rate amongst African-American buyers is almost twice that of whites. And we know that, that we have buyers who are ready and willing to buy a house, they're just getting denied. And we're seeing it happening a number of different ways. Now, they may get the pre-approval from the, from the front end, but then when it comes time to underwriting, for whatever reason, the underwriter decides, "Hey, I don't want to do this long." A lot of times, we know what the problem is. It's not, it's not the finances, it's not their pay stubs. Unfortunately, it's the color of their skin, and that's something that we have to take a look at. Another big issue is that if you're able to finally get a house, if you're able to get through the lending program, and you're, you're ready to get that house appraised, you want to pull some equity out, you want to send your kids to college, you want to invest back in the neighborhood, or you just want to just grow some equity, we're now seeing an increase in appraisal bias. You'll see a picture there of Mr. Terry Horton. Mr. Horton owns a house in the Norwood area. He was doing his service to try to ensure that he's providing, you know, affordable housing to his tenants who are also African-American, who happen to be on Section 8. He tried to use the equity out of that house to go out and to do some more investments, but unfortunately, the appraisal came back extremely low. It should have been appraised near $500,000. The appraiser put it in at $300,000. That's a $200,000 gap. He was able to go out and find some other appraisers that did a good appraisal, and it came out to the, to the amount that he thought it would be and should be, which was right around $500,000. Unfortunately, this is happening way too often. And unfortunately for Mr. Horton, he decided to fight it. But there's a number of individual families that are not aware that this is what's going on. And this is a huge loss in revenue to our county, because now you're seeing people getting bad appraisals, that's less revenue than the county's going to get, and that's less equity that our, that our homeowners are going to be able to use to invest in other things that they want to do in their life, which is going to impact them and their inability to grow their wealth. So, what are we asking for? Why are we here today? We are real estate professionals. We want to provide input on public policy. We want to be on committees, we want to be on boards. We have the expertise, we have the skillset. President Reese, I want to thank you for allowing the opportunity for Mr. Beard to join the Board of Revisions, and also want to personally thank you for appointing me to the Board of Revisions that gets sworn in tomorrow morning. So, thank you for that. But there's other of us. I mean, we've got a whole room here of Realtists that have just as much experience, if not more, than me and David. Well, I don't know about David. But some of these folks in this room are real estate professionals who I, who've been in the business long before I got in the business, people who, when I say, "Hey, I want to get in the business," are people I went and talked to. They deserve an opportunity as well. We want to partner. We know that there's money coming from national, from the White House, from, from our US government. We want to help you implement programs to, to not only increase black homeownership, we want to make sure that we sustain and keep the people that have homes now that are African-Americans, that they stay in their homes, that they reinvest back into their homes, and that they have the ability to go out and buy something else. And last, and definitely not least, if all my Realtists could stand, all of my Realtists could stand, please, all of my Cincy Realtists. We want opportunities. We're no different than any other contractor, any other business that does real estate. We have more experience than a number of other nonprofits that are out there working. We are on the front lines of increasing black homeownership on a daily basis. I guarantee, if you talk to anyone in this room, they could give you about two or three stories about the struggles that we're having trying to find homes for black families. It's a struggle. So, please, give us the opportunity to do more business with the county. We are here to help, we're here to participate, and we're here also to grow economically. Thank you so much.
I want to thank you again for that. I want to open up the floor as Vice President Treehouse, do you have anything?
Thank you. Thank you, Derek, for being here. Thank you all for being here. I'm glad you're here at the county. I don't mean to say versus the city, but anyway, we're glad you're here at the county.
We're happy to be here.
Right, because there's so much going on here that is a nexus to what you just talked about and what you're doing. We're so involved in the housing space right now. Thanks to the federal government and the American Rescue Plan dollars, we've been able to make a $40 million investment as a county into affordable housing. And I'm certain that you guys heard about that during the presentations. I wasn't there, but I am sure you, you were made aware. But this is a historic time at the county, and we are not sure we're going to have that kind of opportunity again, because these are federal dollars that we feel like, I feel like might be once-in-a-career kind of opportunities. So, this board decided our highest priority was housing, because we know there is such a deficit in affordable housing in the county. So, I do want to say that I have a soft spot for Realtors. You're the ambassadors to the community. I mean, when somebody wants to move into the community or move around the community, you're the ambassador for those neighborhoods, for those homes, and I have a great affection for Realtors and because of the role you play in promoting what we do as a county, what the city does, and all our fantastic neighborhoods. So, thank you for what you do. I've been twanging with becoming a Realtor myself, because, you know, why not? I think it's a fascinating profession that you guys get to be involved in. One thing that you noted, so again, thank you for being here, and welcome to the county. I'm glad you're here. When you talk about these barriers to lending and the low homeownership rate for African-Americans in this community, it really is astonishing to see those numbers, especially as they stack up relative to the white population in this county, and then the national numbers too lumped on top of that. So, you, you mentioned a little bit, I don't know if you can expound just a little bit upon the, the lending barriers, the, just the barriers in general. If you're seeing any shifts, what you see on the horizon by way of what can be done to, I know the, the number of units available or the homes available is one thing, and that's a much broader question, but you highlighted some discrimination in this field. And I would like to just dig in just a little bit on the, the reasons for that and what you see the path forward to be, because you guys are on the ground dealing with this all the time, and anecdotally, I'm sure you, as you say, you've all got stories, but what can be done to, to ameliorate some of that? And what are you doing to, to bring that to a more fair level in Hamilton County?
I think the first thing that we're doing is we're doing the home education. Education is the key. We're doing the home buyer fairs to try to help, first of all, alleviate some of the myths around what it takes to get a loan for a home. We are also working to help educate our future homeowners on what they need to do to be prepared to buy a home, as not only from a, just a mental standpoint, but financially as well. Preparing yourself, improving your credit, saving your money, having your check stubs and things ready to go when it's time. But more importantly, those future homebuyers need someone by their side, that when they are, when they don't know they're being discriminated against, they need someone to talk to them to say, "Hey, no, you're being discriminated against." And we either need to A, find you a different lender who's willing to lend to you, you know, B, we need to report this, or we need to do A and B, which is why we've been working more closely with Housing Home, Housing Opportunities Made Equal, to try to help alert them to issues that we have when we find that some of our homebuyers are running to some things that they may not feel are discriminatory, but they really are.
So, it's, it's the quantity, it's lending practices, it's getting folks prepared so that when they are in that position to buy a home, they're ready to go.
They're ready to go.
It's all of the above.
Yes. And what we are good at is that we use our own lenders. You know, we use lenders that we know, who we trust, who, you know, I can pick up the phone and call Joey from Republic Bank and say, "Hey, what's going on with my client?" A lot of times, we have a number of buyers who want to buy the home, and they're just kind of doing it on their own, and they do something to quicken or to rocket mortgage, and it doesn't really work out because there's no relationship there. So, the thing that we offer with the Realtists is we're kind of a full, we're, we're, we're a one-stop shop. We can get you everywhere from lending to helping me buy a home to the title work. Donnie's not here today, but Donnie would say, "Hey, I can get your security system set up for you as well." So, that's kind of the advantage we have over working with other groups as well.
Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for inviting me. And I'm very happy that you came to the county instead of the city. The county is leading the way. The county is leading the way as it relates to housing, as was mentioned earlier. Housing, unfortunately, is still not equal. There's still redlining going on. We think about here in the county, opportunity, diversity, and inclusion, and everything that we do. It's on the forefront of our mind. Unfortunately, discrimination is on the forefront of many others' minds as relates to, as you said earlier, lenders. I'm just really saddened by the fact that we have to continue to talk about black people getting ahead, black professionals being treated as other professionals. I'm saddened, but I'm happy. Because unless we continue to bring it to the forefront and advocate and have groups like this, it'll never change. The numbers did not surprise me at all, because we know discrimination exists in every area. And so you guys are here to make sure that the people that you are serving that look like you, that look like us, are able to have a home. They have enough money to do it, why can't they do it? So I'm just preaching to the choir, basically. But I thank you for all that you're doing and raising awareness to everyone and getting a better understanding of that we want what everybody else wants. You know, we want a beautiful home, and we want our families to be safe. So I just thank you all for what you're doing, and thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Yes, there's also, on our national site, NAREB site, there's also, we call it the Sheba Report. And it stands for State of Housing in Black America. And that's a report that's done on an annual basis that looks at the numbers, that has policy recommendations and other recommendations that we can do as a county and municipality to help kind of alleviate some of those things. Commissioner Dumas.
Hey, I'm going to ask Jeff Aludo, our administrator, because I remember when I first got elected, I talked with him about the realtors being included along with the realtors as we're making some of these decisions. And there's some other things, I think, I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about, because I know you didn't get to talk to them earlier.
Thank you, Madam President. And Mr. Dansby and I talked very briefly before the meeting here. So, no, just very happy to reconnect with Mr. Dansby and the organization. I know that we have worked with them in the past. We were talking about some of the, even back going into COVID and some of the work that we were trying to spur with the Home Ownership Center, et cetera. We, I think, had involved the realtors in our ARPA stakeholder sessions as well, which ultimately came out with a recommendation around affordable housing. So we certainly want to keep the group in the loop on that. There's been some work. There's some individuals that have left the county that were heavily involved, that moved on to some other communities locally that were heavily involved with doing some outreach work with the realtors as well. We've got a lot of projects going on right now, both as it relates to real estate work, as it relates to trying to figure out how we partner with various groups to make strides collectively on improving the state of minority homeownership in the community. So we'll want to reach out to you on that as well, as well as just making sure that you're involved. I know you met with Robert Bell a little bit this morning, so making sure you're involved with that work on a daily basis as well, in addition to some of the more strategic things that we might work on. So it's good to remake the connection here today, and we'll be talking more, I'm sure.
Awesome. If you could just provide us with enough timing to make sure that we have the capacity to make sure we can deliver on what you can, I think that our organization is poised to be able to do that effectively.
And I do want to highlight with Mr. Aludo, one of the things, you know, I was on about commercial property. We've got something that we put in the budget, I wanted in the budget, to deal with ownership, land ownership with, among African American in terms of, because land is something that's not being reproduced. We're working through that to see how that can maybe be helpful with this group. But also, I want to just commend Mr. Aludo, because one of the things I talked about is that we don't look at us as commercial property, and we do. We have facilities, we're buying buildings and building things. And he went out, and J.R. Foster, your speaker today, became the first African American to do a commercial deal for Hamilton County in history, when you think about, you know, it's been around since about the 1800s. So I do want to commend him for that. That's a big deal, wasn't just one deal. I think it's like two deals or more. But the point is, bringing people into the table, and then all of a sudden, it started to be partnerships with majority and minority, and just started to move in the right direction. I don't know, Jeff, if you wanted to say something about that?
So about the...
J.R. Foster.
No, so just, no, he's been great. I mean, I've known J.R. for years, and it was good to get him involved with the work of the county. You know, in the past, honestly, we hadn't been doing a lot of real estate work because we didn't have any money to buy anything, right? So we weren't selling a lot of property either. But now that we've gotten back into that, you know, we, there have been historically some real estate entities that have worked for us, have done great work, but we realized that we needed to diversify that line of work as well. And so I knew J.R., we got J.R. involved with some things. And importantly, we've sent the message out to some of our, some of the other entities that we've been working with that as we do these things, especially when we're working on big projects, that we want that collaborative approach as well to draw those folks in where they may not have known the opportunity existed.
Thank you, and I'm glad you had all your members stand up, because when they're selling houses, we're talking, these folks are paying taxes. So we can't have taxation without a participation. The presentation was very good. Commissioner Dumas, did you have something you wanted to say? I saw you hit your butt.
I just want to make another comment.
Go ahead.
You know, I keep hearing about, we're looking at strategies, we're trying to figure it out, and that's great. But I just say, why does it take so long? Why does it take so long for certain groups, women, blacks, or whatever it is, why does it take so long? How can we work together, set a timeline of increasing the numbers of black realtors? Set a timeline, like you just said about the projects that Jeff got you involved. But I'm just tired of talking. Things are moving, just moving a little too slow for me. And so we have to just be more definite about setting timelines and not just talking about it. And that you guys see some results, we see some results. And when you come back next year, the numbers don't look like that.
I agree, if I could just comment on Commissioner Dumas. I think you're right. The longer we wait, each day that goes by, the black homeownership rate is going down. If you think about, you know, the cycle of doing a real estate development project, it typically takes about 18 to 24 months. So if you all decided, hey, look, today, we want to build 50 units of, you know, middle housing for our schoolteachers, our bus drivers, you know, the people who serve us food, people who are administrators, it's not going to be until 2025 that that property comes on the market. And I don't know where our homeownership rate amongst African Americans is going to be at that time. It's at 33%. By the time that happens, it may be 31. So now we're trying to play catch up. So until we get to the point to where you said, we have a timeline, we have a plan, we're going to continue to see black wealth decrease, and we're going to continue to see black homeownership decrease.
I appreciate that. I think the message for me is I'm on a right now program. I'm a victim myself, trying to make it out here in terms of searching on this homeownership piece. It doesn't matter about your occupation when you're African American. It's tough.
It's hard.
It's, and when I look at the national numbers, I mean, we're lagging on the national numbers.
10% behind.
I mean, this is unreal. We can't, we just went up on, in terms of the amount of people that live in the county. And the reason why I think it's great for you guys to be in the county because we got 49 municipalities, we got lands throughout. But I think we've been clear, and I want to continue to make it clear at this board, and I talk to Jeff all the time. Mr. Aludo probably gets tired of me saying, I said, we got to move now. And we have been moving, but we got, we were so, we're so far behind that this, I mean, when I got here, I remember fourth quarter report came in. We had spent $16 million in contracts on the banks to fix up the stadium. And under minority business, it was $1,400. I thought it was a mistake with the comma. I said, maybe the comma is at the wrong spot. $1,400. So you can see how far, as a board, that we have to come from to get us to equity. That's a long way. But this board has, we have been chipping away at it, and we understand the sense of urgency. We've got opportunity with affordable housing, this money that, this is a one-time opportunity, and we got to get it right. If we don't get it right, we won't have this opportunity. But if we get it right, we could change the trajectory. We have new housing that we're talking about building. We didn't put all our money in just gap financing. We said, listen, we want to see something. So we want to make sure that you guys are at the table. And when we do these things, we have to step up and make sure that the realtors can help sell the product.
Yes.
That's, I remember we did a homorama in the city, the first ever. It was Villages of Daybreak. I said, I wasn't just happy doing a Villages of Daybreak and have a homorama with some nice furniture. What about who going to sell these houses? And we brought a partnership with the realtors. That was 20 years ago. Now, we got to be doing a lot better than that now. So again, thank y'all for coming, and I want you to know that our board is not one to just sit here. We roll up our sleeves, and we're out there, you know, we got, you know, we want to help turn the dirt. But understanding that we understand it, and I can talk for myself, because I've been through it, I'm in it. I'm not divorced from it. I'm not talking down to it, I'm a product of it. And so I want you to, I want us to make sure that the things that you said, for example, the loaning component, we need to look at where we put our money. Now, we don't, we get to vote on it. I know the state has some rules. But we got to look at, don't put our money if these people aren't loaning. We can't take the taxpayer money and deposit it in a bank that's not even respecting the taxpayer. So we should put that as a criteria when we have to vote again. Where do we deposit the money? And then the other part, dealing with insurance, you didn't mention that. Insurance is a problem. They won't insure your house about the worth of the house. So then you have a natural disaster or whatever, and we're wiped out. We just can't, you know, we can't recoup those dollars. So we need to look at the insurance component. We need to also look at the loan component, and then the cash versus loan. Because you might get a loan, and then somebody else come, and they got cash. And of course, they're going to take the cash, and now you did all this work, and now you didn't get the house. And it's so disappointing. So I know Carmen Thomas, who's here, as well as Realtors, she's always telling me about that. She got them to the finish line, and then here comes somebody with some cash. And then here's that family that went through that whole process, and they're knocked out, and they got to start all over again. So I know those are the things that we're dealing with. I think together, we can overcome it. And today was a big day. The city is one of our municipalities. So we do love Cincinnati. I live in Cincinnati, we love Cincinnati. But also, if you want to sell out in Lincoln Heights, or Harrison, or, you know, Clees, you can do that. And that's why we wanted you guys here countywide. So we look forward to working with you.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think that that's a tremendous opportunity for the county. A number of our prospective home buyers are priced out of the city. So now, areas like Kennedy Heights, Malheathie, Colrain, are now, you know, it's just like, you know, we're all Realtors. No, not all, but most of us are Realtors. And we say, well, we can't find, expand your search. So now we're saying, hey, let's try Colrain, let's try Forest Park, let's try Kennedy Heights. Because those are opportunities that have houses that are still in that price point, that a number of our buyers can still buy. So if we're able to get those houses built up and ready to sell, we can keep these folks in the county before we lose them to some of our surrounding counties.
Yes, well, thank you all very much. We appreciate you being here. We'd love for you to stay. I'm sure you have some houses to stay. You have to get out of here. But thank y'all for being here. We really appreciate it, and we're happy to help facilitate, hopefully, some future partnerships. And obviously, to our administrator, he was right now. He's got about two pages of notes, so I'm sure he'll be in touch with you.
Thank you all so much for having us here today. And thank you again, President Reese.
Oh, wait, 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 before y'all leave, we got to do this. I know it takes time. Y'all come up here and get a picture. 20 years from now, someone's going to say, what happened 20 years from now? Come right behind us, we'll stay here. Okay, we got another presentation. So if y'all can take your conversation in the hallway. Thank you. And Mr. Dansby, make sure, Alloy wanted to make sure they all exchange cards, because they do our economic development. Thank you. Okay, and as we get ready for our next, as we get ready for our next presentation, I will be remiss, I forgot to mention about Mr. Bob Lane, Robert Lane, who did a lot with our county and was one of the people that started the realtors. So we really appreciate Mr. Lane. Okay, we're moving to item number two on our agenda, Community Reinvestment Area Application. And we've got Harry Blanton, who is with Alloy, who represents our Hamilton County Economic Development Office.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for your time today. As you said, I'm Harry Bland with Hamilton County Economic Development Office. We have a community reinvestment area agreement before you today for online.cars. I'm sure you recognize the name McCloskey. Online.cars is a division of McCloskey. And today, not only will I be giving you a brief presentation, we will ask Mr. Keith McCloskey to come up and give a few comments. And then Ms. Kim Lapense with Sims Township is here to support the project as well. So to start it off, we're very excited about this project for online.cars for many reasons, but one is, the first thing is that, did I, yeah, there we go. What we're dealing with here is a property that was a struggling retail property up in Sims Township. The major tenant was a J.C. Penney that had been vacant for several years. There's a little retail strip that's also a part of the property, and about 10 out of the 15 bases are vacant. And so it's been struggling for a number of years. The owner put it on for sale. McCloskey saw it as a great opportunity to come in and redevelop the property for their division, online.cars. And online.cars is a nationwide company that sells cars online, as it says. And so what it does is it brings dollars into our economy from outside. I believe they've told me that they've sold cars in all 50 states across the country. So we're getting a lot of economic activity that's coming in from this project. The, not only will they do that, but they'll be adding some new GM electric vehicle charging stations. So it's going to increase the infrastructure of our charging stations for electric vehicles. The, let me go to the next thing. There is a $33 million investment in this property, so they're doing a major investment. About $18 million of that is for the new facility. They're going to be employing 125 new full-time jobs. The average salary is $75,000, so they're nice paying jobs as well. This kind of shows you the rendition of what it's going to look like eventually. of what it's gonna look like eventually. But, uh, as far as an incentive, we're recommending a 50% for 10 years. Um, Sims Township passed a resolution back on, in February to support the incentive. And, uh, they will hopefully, uh, get their construction completed by the spring of 2025. So I'm happy to take questions, but I also can have Mr. McCloskey come up and give some comments, and then maybe we'll take your questions after that.
Yes, I like to do that. Mr. McCloskey come up and...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Afterwards, I'll open it up for questions.
President Reese?
Hello?
Um, yes, we're excited about this project, uh, with the advent of the internet and the power of the internet. From a marketing perspective, uh, dealerships have grown outside of the traditional billboard TV Cincinnati Inquirer type advertising. So with that, we decided to kinda put the wind at our backs and open up a division that was different than the name McCloskey Chevrolet. That might be known to people in the Cincinnati market that have seen our TV spots over the years or driven by the dealership. But 99.3% of the US population lives in one of the Nielsen TV markets that we don't purchase, and they don't know who McCloskey Chevrolet is. So by having the name online dot cars, it's certainly our family, it's certainly McCloskey Chevrolet. But to someone in Lexington, or Nashville, or Los Angeles, or Dallas, Fort Worth, online dot cars feels a lot more like CarMax or Carvana. And they're more open and receptive to clicking into the Google search and finding our cars. And then our agents, our reps, our online sales specialists, as we call them, work in this facility. And we'll be able to expand in this facility. And then we facilitate, uh, the acquisition. We approve the person's credit. And then we have a patent that we received from the federal government in 2017 that has an algorithm about how we source used vehicles from the various auctions in all 50 states. So instead of transporting a car from Cincinnati to LA, which would be cost prohibitive for our guest or us, we end up sourcing the vehicle in that general area, reconditioning it locally, and then delivering it to their home or apartment. So that, coupled with the fact that Chevrolet has 3,000 dealerships nationwide, Chevrolet dealerships, uh, we're able to also help people with brand-new Chevrolets through what Chevrolet calls the Courtesy Delivery Network. So as we worked with somebody on a used vehicle, possibly could be a person that had a tough chapter in life and needed credit rehabilitation, and we worked with them on a used vehicle. But instead of leaving the customer in that vehicle at a higher interest rate than we'd like to see them at, we work very closely with GM Financial, the captive finance arm from General Motors. They have a vested interest in getting that customer to be a Chevrolet customer, not just a used car customer. And then we're able to source the vehicle and deliver the car from the plant with equalized freight to any of the 3,000 Chevrolet dealers in the country. Then we deliver it to the person's local home, where they go to that local dealership to pick the car up. So it kind of extends our reach. And currently, uh, in the King's Auto Mall, which is just about four tenths of a mile away from this 18-acre parcel, everything is packed to the gills. You know, we unfortunately don't have enough guest parking there. Um, and, and so in order to expand our operation and easily hit, we believe exceed those numbers that, that Harry presented from an employment standpoint, we need room, uh, to hire more team members, to have more guest parking spaces, and to have more display spaces. The business we're in happens to be very space-intensive, uh, and therefore this room helps us do that. So, in any event, appreciate your guys' consideration on this. Uh, certainly open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Um, any questions, open up to Vice President Drew House.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, thanks for the presentation. Thank you also, Harry, for the presentation. Um, just a couple of questions. So, um, this footprint of 18 acres, it, I, I saw, see the rendering of the building. Are there going to be cars on this property, or is this just the building and then employee parking?
Absolutely. Cars on the front half towards Union Cemetery is where the new Chevrolets and the pre-owned vehicles would be on display. By centering the building forward of where the original Walmart and J.C. Penney building was, it allows us to have approximately 500 parking spaces behind the building, which would be technicians' cars, parts' cars, employee cars, customers' cars waiting to get into service or to be picked up after being repaired in service. And that's the preference of the architectural firm that General Motors uses as Gensler. That's why we're doing a ground-up build. Uh, when we first looked at the property, we were gonna try to save the J.C. Penney building and expand off of it. But we're really much better off to build a ground-up, brand-new, world-class facility. And that building is gonna get leveled, along with the strip center to the right that has 16 storefronts in it. Uh, as Harry said, there's only four tenants at this point. One has two stores that are currently in that property. And obviously, we're working with them. We went in eyes wide open that there were existing leases that we had to honor as they wound down, and we're working through that now as we start the construction phase.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to get an understanding. So is, this is a call center and a retail?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
McCloskey Chevrolet is the main identity there. Online dot cars is our internet division, if you think about it that way, that works with people for the most part outside of the Cincinnati market.
Yeah, I just heard you say that there are so many other, uh, operations throughout the country. I didn't know if this was like one of those where the cars would actually be on site, or if that was happening in your other locations throughout the country. So it's both and?
Yes, it'll be a McCloskey Chevrolet dealership like you would see in Denver or Miami, Florida.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. But the, the call center is housed in this building?
Correct.
So this is the headquarters for that?
It's, it's in that building, and then we have a property on the Loveland facility. You know, we have a property in Loveland that also has some online dot cars reps in it. When this building is done, we can consolidate them to this location. And then our existing dealership in the King's Auto Mall, Chevrolet has approved that to be a pre-owned vehicle supercenter. So we'll continue to maintain our business there as used vehicles only and service. And then this new facility will be the main McCloskey Chevrolet with both new and used vehicles and our internet division.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Um, one other question. So usually, when we get a proposal like this, um, we ask about community input and the reaction of the community. And, and I've looked into this, and, um, the property, the J.C. Penney, Penney has been vacant for a while. And so can you help us better understand the community response to this project?
It was, it was supportive. There were some people that just wanted to better understand the lighting and the paging system and et cetera. But, uh, as I'm sure Kim could attest, uh, it was unanimous support at the end of the day of the overall project. And we plan on, as an example, putting a extra-wide, five- or six-foot-wide sidewalk all the way around the property. It's like a walking path. Um, I don't know if you've been through Montgomery and, and seen the little statue of the family on the bikes right there by Pfeiffer Park. I stopped there one day and saw that Gary Price was the sculptor on that, a gentleman out of Utah. And we're working with him on six of those type family scenes that we would put around the perimeter of the 18 acres. We plan on irrigating it, flowers, shrubs, new curbing. And we want people in the community to come and walk around it. It's a full kilometer to walk around the 18 acres. And we're designing it in such a way that with these little setbacks with the sculptures, that it feels very park-like, let's say, and not dealership-like.
Okay. So you do have community support for the project. And then you've got official community support as well, right, with the township trustees? Am I right?
Unanimous, all five. We're supportive of the project, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I was gonna mention that. I think it's important. Sims Township passed a resolution. I'm sure, uh, citizens would have attended that meeting, and you had to work on the ground level with them. Um, also, the fact that this is, uh, I mean, the alternative is to have a vacant J.C. Penney's. And nobody wants an empty, that's the worst thing that happens when, uh, one of the, uh, stores leave. It's just, it's bad. It's a sore. It runs property values down in the area. So, uh, certainly, the alternative is not there. Um, and then the fact that, um, not only these jobs, but other jobs that you have, uh, supported over the years, uh, at a time when, um, we, we're trying to bring industries into our county. And certainly, uh, these are tough times, and you're expanding an industry in our county, uh, a family-owned business. Um, and so, in a, in a very competitive marketplace.
It is.
And so, um, I certainly support this. Um, I would, uh, ask, uh, Harry, what's our next steps? Uh, unless Vice President Drew House, you've got something else?
I'm, I'm willing to support. I just wanted to get some clarity. I, I was not clear at all whether or not the cars would actually be on the slot, if it was a call center primarily. And so those questions have been cleared up.
Yep, dealership first. And one of the things I'm most excited about, everybody thinks it's sale, sale, sales, and the big two-story showroom. It'll be a very spectacular facility. Um, but the service department is gonna have 34 new bays and lift, be heated and air-conditioned, uh, and we're open 24/7. So we have a second shift of technicians that could then come and be productive in that bay with the lift, right? So Great Oaks is a, is a school that, that we love getting talent out of Great Oaks. And so those extra 64 technicians that we can hire, that can make good six-figure money as a technician working on Chevrolet cars and at McCloskey Chevrolet, are totally new to us. Sales, you can always fit a few more people on the showroom floor, but a lift requires a lift to get the vehicle or your vehicles up off the ground. So the thing I'm most excited about this project is the back part of the building. It's got all the additional lift and part space, so all those additional technicians can come in. And that's great for us, because people buy cars about once every five years, but they service their car four or five times a year. So you'll start to see McCloskey Chevrolet spots that, you know, talk about being open 24/7, free car war, safety inspection, guaranteed lowest prices. And hopefully, we earn a lot of people's money from the surrounding counties and area, uh, that spend their first dollar with us, just simply getting an oil change or tires or brakes. And then we do a good enough job that they continue to stick with us for, for future sales. So...
I did have one other...
It's exciting.
I have one other question. Sorry. Not to prolong, but you mentioned, uh, charging stations in, on the property. Are those available to the public, or is that just gonna be for the use of your business?
Available to the public.
Okay.
Uh, we work, I'm on General Motors Dealer Executive Board. I'm the chairman of the Chevrolet Dealer Council, those 3,000 dealers. And we've worked closely with GM on that movement to an all EV future, right? The Equinox, the Silverado, the Blazer, they're all coming out EV this year. And Exit 19, uh, off of 71, happens to be where Fields Erdel is. And, and GM study said that's one of the most needy spots for six to 10 high-speed chargers. Think about Tesla high-speed chargers, that we would be open with the lights on 24/7. And then in all the various apps that people would use to remove that range anxiety from being able to travel around the country, Exit 19, north of Cincinnati in Hamilton County, will be a spot that they can pull off and plug in and go inside. We plan on having a Starbucks there. Uh, we're gonna have vacuums by the EVs, so people can, at no charge, vacuum out their car if they want to while the car is charging up. But no, they're gonna be available to our customers and the public.
How many stations?
At this point, the, the study's out. They wanna kinda balance it with, you know, how do EV sales go over the, the next year? But it's gonna be somewhere to the low side of six and the high side of 10 of the super-fast chargers, right? People don't wanna come in and plug in for 24 hours. They wanna get 100 miles in 10 minutes is the standard they're going for. And people that tend to get off the highway and do that aren't looking to get up to a 350-mile full tank of electricity. They typically are on their way to, you know, Louisville, and it's low enough that they wanna get a quick 10-minute charge. And when they get home later, plug in on their electricity and get it up to a full, full tank. But we'll have probably 30 additional chargers that are just there at the 120 or 240 level, just for our inventory that's sitting there that we want fully charged when somebody goes on a test drive or buys it. But the main fast ones that the public would pull up to, think Tesla, superchargers. There'll be something along six or 10 of them down the main center highway. We're naming that Bowtie Boulevard for Chevy, you know, bowtie. That's our logo. That's where you'll see it.
There are a lot of nice, there are a lot of good things related to this project. The wages for the employees, the charging stations, the, the, uh, attention you're paying to the landscaping and to the community is good. I, I'm not gonna even mention stormwater. I'm sure you've thought of that, that as well, cuz we're always concerned about stormwater and, and dumping, um, water into the system. So, but thank you for coming in. Appreciate it.
We do plan on having, by the way, the tallest, uh, stainless flagpole in the region at 210 feet. That's been approved. So it's a, the flag itself weighs over 110 pounds.
Just an ongoing commercial here.
Hey, you, you asked for it.
I'm gonna have to stop asking questions.
You asked for it. Yeah, you know that voice, Steve McCloskey. You asked for it. But no, I, um, thanks for that, that information. I know, uh, Mr. Beck, I think he left out, but our engineer was here. And we always, we're doing a lot of work on Fields Erdel. So it was good to get that information about Exit 19 that we, that we have. So I'm gonna ask, uh, Harry, what do we do next? We're gonna get a resolution to us?
Yes. So a week from Thursday, you'll have a resolution to consider approval of the CRA. So it'll be a week from...
So next Thursday?
It'll be the 20th of April.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna ask if we could take a, just a five-minute recess real quick. We'll be right back. to ask if we could take a, just a five-minute recess real quick. We'll be right back. Okay, we are back. And we have item number three, and this is an item to give a status report on the stadium renovation framework, update on the lease as it relates to the Cincinnati Bengals and our stadium. There were some reports that the Bengals wants to move, they want to start moving forward with negotiations. And I thought it was best for us to, before we start reading stuff in the paper, we want to keep the public aware of what's going on. We're talking about a lease that's over twenty years old. Some people, as my, my interim chief of staff said, he, he wasn't around, but now he's around to help pay for it. So I thought it would be best for us to step back, find out what type of lease are we in, what is the situation, and then, then we can start talking about moving forward. Today, we won't be obviously having any answers today. But as people are reading it, I want us to be as open and transparent and out in the public as possible. There are some people didn't even know we own the stadiums, you know, they're just finding out. And so today is, I think, that first step as we start to move toward the next negotiations. I do want to reiterate that no one that I can think of that's on this dais, and correct me if I'm wrong, was around with the original deal. But we are around for this deal. And there were some things hopefully learned and some things hopefully we can correct. And so I turn it over to Jeff. I know we have our attorneys with the prosecutor and private attorneys that will be dealing with this. But I just thought if I'm just a regular taxpayer out there, what is this? What's in this lease? Where do we go from here? And I just thought this is how we should begin the negotiations. I want to also be very clear that obviously none of what we do is personal. Our job in this negotiation as elected county officials, our job, our client, is the taxpayers. So we go to the table, we have to go to the table on behalf of that client, which is the taxpayers. And then on the other side will be their job is to represent their business, their business model. And that's how negotiations are handled. So every question I know that I'm going to be asking is on behalf of my client. I sound like a lawyer, don't I? My client, the taxpayer. But the taxpayers, and those are the, the way that I will be shaping these negotiations and questions that I would be asking so that we can get hopefully a win-win, a win for the taxpayers, a win for a local company that's here. And I think if you walk away with a win-win, it's great. But if the taxpayers lose, that's not a good deal. So we're going to be fighting to make sure the taxpayers get the best deal possible. So that's how negotiations go. And I think today in my mind, this is kind of, I know we've been in negotiations on other, this item, that item, this item, but this is, from my knowledge, the first time we're going to open up the whole process, the whole, the lease, the stadium, and it kind of begins today. Mr. Aludo.
Thank you, Madam President. I think you framed that, that very well, especially in terms of the last thing you said about everything, the framework. And I will walk through here shortly, the framework that we're thinking about in terms of how all these things work holistically with, with each other. Before I do that, though, I would be remiss if I didn't just take a very brief second. The commission will notice that we have, uh, we're blessed to have Assistant Prosecutor Charlie Anis with us today. But that is because this morning, Mr. Friedman, well, Mr. Friedman's wife gave birth to their second daughter today, somewhere around eight o'clock in the morning, Roger, I believe. So.
Eight-thirty-eight AM.
Eight, eight, eight-thirty, eight-thirty.
Roger, is that why you're back there smiling? You've just been smiling the whole thing.
Eight-thirty, eight-thirty AM. So I texted Michael, and I told him, so, oh, there's no excuse. He should be here.
He had time to get here, no?
He laughed at me, but it sounds like everyone is doing well, so he just wanted.
Last I heard, baby mother and father are doing fine. And Mike just wanted to know if I'd opened the Five Twenty-Nine account yet, you know?
Congratulations.
Please pass along our best.
Yes.
Uh, so, and, and Madam President, you framed it very well, that this gets its start a couple of weeks ago. There was some media coverage about the, there's some news reports about the, the Bengals, the future of negotiations, stadium renovations, et cetera, and ultimately the future of the, the partnership between the county and the team here in Hamilton County. That was on the heels of another story on the, the, the relocation of Hilltop off of the riverfront, et cetera. So we thought it was, is a good time just to take a step back, as you had indicated, Madam President, and especially as we're awaiting the, the delivery of the master plan that we're also working on from a renovation perspective. And just in the interest of transparency, to take a step back and talk a little bit, thinking about it as a sense of a primer. Like you said, there's a lot of people in this community who are not even around when this, when this issue first came up and when the first lease was done. So giving a, a bit of a primer to the public on what is involved with this, what is involved with this framework. As we mentioned, there are some things that work together holistically. So today, I want to walk through a bit of what that framework is, the different things that are going to be a part of that discussion. I also want to walk through a little bit how the county and the team have worked together over the past couple of years to put us in a good position to have these discussions now. And I also, I'm also going to ask for the assistance from Mr. Gableman to close out the presentation and walking through some of the trends in the league that we're seeing right now. I just think if I'm a member of the public, you hear stuff on the news, you might read, you see something on ESPN about a new stadium or something like that, but to have all that consolidated in a presentation like this thought would be of interest to the public. So, and I think, well, let's see, we'll get the presentation started here. So again, talking about all of these things working holistically, what are the discussions between the county and the team going to entail as we, as we move forward? So I think we're, we're looking at the end of the day, hopefully several things. And this list is not all-inclusive, but a comprehensive and effective capital renovation of the stadium, the long-term future viability and competitiveness of competitiveness of the team here on the riverfront, and extended and renegotiated lease that is sustainable, Madam President, as you said, for both county and, and the team, the enhanced connection and integration of the community and the stadium, and a sustainable and diverse funding model for the capital maintenance and operation of, of the stadium. So as we've seen in, in other communities, that as the, as the cost of these renovations and stadium improvements continues to escalate, that it really does require a diverse funding model, everything from, from local, state, team, league partnerships to make sure that all of these goals can be, can be accomplished. So Commissioner Reese had asked that we touch on a bit on, on the lease. Again, take from the perspective that there's a lot of folks in the community who weren't here at the time that this, or initial, initial lease was signed, so they really don't even know what it entails. So I'm not going to go into excruciating depth on the lease. The, the lease and all of its amendments are this document here, which would take probably several sessions to get through. But just to give folks a, an overview of what the, the lease is and its terms. So the, the stadium lease was initially executed back on May twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-seven. I think you're correct, President Reese. I'm not aware of anyone on this dais that was, that was around at the time. The initial term expires in, on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. It also contains multi, contains five two-year extensions that are exercisable no later than twelve months prior to the then forthcoming expiration date. The lease controls the relationship between the, the county and the team on everything, including matters such as the, the term, revenues and cost sharing, how and who uses the stadium complex, the capital, how capital improvements are affected within the stadium, the condition of the stadium, how the operations, maintenance, and management of the stadium occur. And the county and the team will be working over the course of the, the next year or two, as we get into all of these things, including renovations of the stadium, working on a new and extended lease in it as, as well. The lease, as I indicated, has als, has also been amended several times. I'm not going to go into depth on, on all of these. And as we start, I should say at the start, as we start this, this public discussion or primer, if you will, that if there are any one of these items that the board thinks we have shortchanged or given short shrift to in terms of, of diving into some depth, just let me know, and we can certainly come back and, and refresh or go deeper at, at another session. But there is so much here and so much history that I just wanted to provide an overview of, of some of these. But as you can see, the lease has been amended five times formally from, related to everything from the, how the stadium would work in the context of the Banks Riverfront development that was proceeding, stadium construction and cost issues. There were some capital-related issues that the team and the county moved for, forward on and develop and even figure out how we develop cap or cost-sharing mechanisms for some of the, the capital improvements. I will say over time that that in, in and of itself has changed a bit. There have been times when the county has funded all of the capital work going on at the, at the stadium. There have been team-funded capital projects that we have gotten into the, we've found ways to work together with the team where the county would reimburse capital that was advanced so that it would, that where the team would front the payment of certain capital items, and the county would reimburse that, such that the cost of the capital would fit into the, into the, the budgetary framework of the county. So over the years, we've worked together to amend the lease to find ways for all that to work. I did just want to.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Certainly.
Real quick. On here it had a, when you go back to the last slide, you have fifty thousand seats. You said seat guarantee, seat ticket guarantee eliminated. What is the total capacity of the stadium?
Sixty, what was that, Joe? Sixty-seven thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. So also just wanted, oh, certainly. Yeah.
I just wanted to know the new direction of the document, the direction of the commissioner or the Bengals are in together. Who, who decided on?
It, it would, it would be together. It was, all these were together. So the amendments formally required board sign-off on, on those amendments. So depending upon the, the specific amendment as to whether it was initiated by, by the team or by the county, I think it probably varies. And again, some of these go back as far as nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand. But, so for instance, when, when there might, may have been some capital improvements that, that were initiated, that may have been something that was more at the request of the team. There may have been others back at, earlier that were more at the request of the county, but I think they were cooperative efforts.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome. So just a little bit about some recent work where, back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, there was an effort to enter, so the lease is, I walked through some of the amendments. The lease has also been amended through some MOUs or memorandums of understanding as well. The most recent being back in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, where we had worked with the team cooperatively to ensure that progress on the Banks could continue. This allowed us to move forward with, just since two thousand nineteen, roughly a hundred million dollars in development that, that allowed for the development to move forward on the Banks, including the Brady Music Center, Smale Riverfront Park, the Bengals' new practice facility on the cleared Hilltop land, and the Black Music Walk of Fame as well. But while we worked together to move forward on the Banks, the real, for the purpose of this discussion, the real benefit of this MOU was that it actually intentionally deferred the staff, the, the major stadium capital investments that were due on, within the context of the lease at that time, and pushed those out into the, into the timeline of a lease renegotiation, which we are getting ready to enter into now. It also enabled the capital repair investment to enable the stadium to maintain current and to keep the bones, as you've heard that term before, the bones of the stadium, solid, such that we could be in a position now not to have to be looking at a new stadium, as we're starting to see in other communities where they're looking at up to two billion dollars or so for investments in, in new stadiums. So we did that jointly with, with the team. And there were joint, as you said, Madam President, there was, there were win-wins out of these, including the advancing of a facility condition assessment that the, we heard the report on roughly a, a year ago, but, last April, and also the additional investment in the, in the Banks' infrastructure as well. So I wanted just to walk through that MOU because it does indicate that we are starting to set a track record of working cooperatively with the team on things that will, as you indicated, be a win-win, work well for the team, work well for the county, and also work well for the community. A bit about the, the facility condition assessment that I just mentioned. So we talked last April about a facility condition assessment. It's interesting, we heard that Gensler was the architect of record for our last staff meeting participant. But Gensler has been working for us and for the team. We have cooperated on this agreement to do a full assessment of the stadium. And we learned last year that the, while the bones of the stadium are, are good, that it would take just to keep those bones solid and to move forward on the core systems of the, of the stadium, roughly four-hundred-and-ninety-million over twenty years. So the next step that we are waiting for is the delivery of the master plan later on this year. That master plan would include other additional improvements to the stadium outside of just the bones. We're talking about things related to fan experience and other things to keep the stadium relevant and modern within, within the NFL industry. That master plan will be combined with the facility condition assessment to create essentially a comprehensive renovation plan that this, that the team and the county can agree on in the context of these broader discussions to advance over a period of, of three to four years, which could be rolled out in phases as well, with some initial phases designed to address certain projects if the, depending upon the condition and need of the stadium at the time. I want to turn it over to Mr. Gableman now to walk through some of the trends in stadium development. Tom's going to walk through what we're seeing just in terms of overall costs with stadium development. Also, some of the things as we are looking at the master plan delivery later on this year, what are some of the things that we expect to see, at least themes in that, that some of the discussions are going to entail as we move forward with this framework with, with the team? So Tom?
Good afternoon. So we're in year twenty-three of the county Bengals lease. And as we look at the context of our lease negotiations that are coming up, the initial lease term terminates in two thousand twenty-six. However, the Bengals notice will be given a year in advance of that if they intend to terminate. So it's very relevant that we start these discussions now. The other major point is, it's what is the context of what is happening all across the NFL and throughout the nation in terms of our, what's occurring across with stadium development since the stadium was built back in two thousand and opened in two thousand. And so when we look what's going on basically from nineteen ninety-five all the way through two thousand twenty-three, you can see what the trend is in terms of new stadium construction costs. So back when, when Paul Brown Stadium, it was then named Paul Brown Stadium, opened in two thousand, we're looking at a cost of four-hundred-and-fifty-five million. And as you can see today, the average for a new stadium is to, over two billion dollars. That's how the trend has moved. So it's significant. And so when, when Administrator Aludo indicates, as he did in his remarks, that but for the county, working with the team over the last twenty-three years. over the last 23 years to take care of Paul Brown Stadium, we could be looking at a new stadium. If you go back and say Riverfront Stadium, Synergy Field, 32-year life, 32 years, open in 1970, imploded in October of 2002. So it was very, very critical to both the team who lived through Synergy Field and Riverfront that was really not taken care of as it should have been. And frankly, the county inherited that building in 1996 and had basically a change in how it would be managed. So that today, we're looking at not a $2 billion investment, but basically making an investment that sustains and enhances so that we have this stadium for decades to come. And so when we look across the NFL, and this trend really started in 2009 with Dallas spending over $1 billion on their stadium, shortly followed by Minnesota, San Francisco, and then followed once, and then also by Atlanta. We look at the spending continued to increase to over the $2 billion that we mentioned. Of course, the one that was off the charts was the Super Bowl from two years ago with SoFi, which went north of $5 billion to complete. So that, that's real, that's a real number that if we were looking at new construction today, the, basically the, the fundings, the funding that we try to have to be in place would be over $2 billion, which frankly, if we look at our models today and no matter how many sources we could try to put together, it would be extremely difficult for the county to come up with another billion dollars to try to fund a new stadium. When we look at renovation costs, and Jeff had mentioned in his remarks, in 2017, 2018, when we were projecting what renovations may cost as it relate to the, a stadium that was approaching 20 years old, we were thinking 250 to 300 million for renovation costs because that's basically where the average had trended. Now that trend has continued to increase for a number of different reasons that we'll talk about. But today, what we're looking at, that trend for a renovated stadium is six to 800 million. Still a nice 50% less than what it would be if we were building a new stadium, but that's the trend. And, and you know, there's no question about that. That's happening with, again, stadiums across the country. So what are we looking at in terms of what, what is, what do these transformed stadiums consist of? What are their elements? Why are they costing so much? And when we look at that, and the stadiums that were built in the late 90s, in the early 2000, much like Paycor Stadium, former Paul Brown Stadium was, you basically, you can see what the stadium's consisted of. And now when we look at stadiums, this is in Minnesota, Atlanta, and of course SoFi, don't even look like stadiums. I mean, they are, they are buildings that wind up being integral with the fabric of the community in their design. It's a major change. When we bring it a little bit closer to home in terms of our peer cities, we look at Buffalo that just finalized their new deal with the, with the state of New York and with Erie County. This is one of the older stadiums in the NFL, built in 1970, went through a series of renovations. And then this is the current projected, let me just back up one, current projected stadium for Buffalo, which is about 1.5 billion for a new stadium. Biggest cost differential there in Buffalo, they did not, they decided not to put a roof structure or to condition the space. That differential, we can see, came into play in Tennessee. Tennessee stadium was built basically same time period as, as Paul Brown Stadium. In 2003, it came online. The difference was the capital repair bill alone for Nissan Stadium was 1.3 billion, capital repair. That's not putting enhancements, that's not renovation, that's taking care of the bones. And as we heard from Gensler last year, the bones of our stadium have been taken care of. It's been well maintained. And as a result, it is still worthy of investment. And this is just the new stadium that's projected in Tennessee. The cost of that is about 2.2 billion to be completed in 2027. So in terms of the elements of the stadium, because this is, I mean, this is what, you know, in terms of whether we're talking about our current lease or a future lease, the stadium needs to be competitive within the NFL. And for a fan experience, for community experience, that's what we would have to look at. And this gives you a sense of what are the trends that are currently occurring? No question, everyone recognizes this. Technology is the dominant feature in new stadia. And we're talking not just about video boards and ribbon boards, but the ability to communicate within that stadium. So we mentioned Minnesota was completed in 2016 at a cost of 1.3 billion. They just announced they're going to do 240 million in renovation, completed in 2016. Seven years later, another 240 in renovations, of which 60 million alone are technology upgrades that are mandatory, major feature. The other pieces, just in terms of as you go through the stadium, the concourses, instead of being something you walk through, they become a destination. In terms of club areas, it's just not the exclusive. It's not the single ticket holder with a $300 ticket that would have access to a club, but it's multiple club areas. It's just not about sitting at the game. It's about having multiple gathering spaces where people come together, they stand, they watch the game, they socialize, enjoy their favorite beverage and so on. That's all changed since Paycor was built and opened in 2000. Sportsbook is no question. Every stadium across the NFL, MLB, will have, will have a sportsbook either within the complex or immediately adjacent to it. That's, that's how things have evolved. The last piece we mentioned, and this is a pretty significant one, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, is the biggest change that we see in the NFL is how the stadia, there's a desire to integrate that stadium with development, with entertainment districts, with the urban core, which is frankly, a huge paradigm shift from where we were even a mere five, six years ago. So this gives you just some sense of both the gathering spaces, the level of finish that are really different from what we have today. But this is where all the stadiums are going. So we've had basically 10 new stadia in the last 12 years that have either been built or announced. Another 10 leases will be expiring within the next six years. Every city that has an expiring lease is looking at, are we looking at a new build? And we'll talk, you know, Cleveland, for example, has gone back and forth between looking at a new building in Cleveland, open the same vintage as Paycor Stadium. Are we looking at a new build and scrape the existing one? Or are we going to try to transform the existing one? I mentioned the sports book, which are essential and a part of it. As far as the spaces within the building, and I think we see this as something that would be pretty significant to change, where for the last 23 years, that building, and just to mention, you know, Paul Brown Stadium, Great American Ballpark are the two largest capital assets that the county has. In terms of the utilization of that space, 12, 14 times a year for major events, and then have obviously weddings and other gatherings and so on, with a transformed stadium that is necessary to meet the needs of the team, at the same time, the county can make changes that are necessary to increase the utilization of that stadium so that it becomes a true community asset that can be used 365. That's the goal of what this transformation is. So you have spaces, whether you're talking about conference rooms or meeting rooms, it becomes something that has a much greater utilization within our region. That's part of the goal. And that's what we've heard from this board, frankly, since Gensler came out with the capital repair assessment last year. And those are the conversations that we've been having with Gensler and with the team about the greater utilization of this facility so that we have a greater return on investment, taxpayer investment. And then this, this goes back to even five years ago, we talked a lot about parking, the necessity for parking and for tailgating. And throughout the NFL, 32 teams, this is what was the most common feature of those teams across the country. 25, 26 stadiums out of 32 were surrounded by a sea of parking. They are islands of asphalt. The biggest change, the biggest dynamic change has been, as you look at what the NFL is doing, Major League Baseball, and you'll see it come up here in just a second, is that there's major development around the stadia. There's a desire to make the stadium activated 24/7, 365. It becomes a vibrant part of the community. It's not an island to itself that's only used on game day. That's the biggest difference. And the interesting thing, I mean, everybody's always joking about, I think Mark Twain said Cincinnati, you know, if you want to, you want to die, go to Cincinnati because you live another 10 years. This is, there's one trend that we actually got right. Cincinnati is 20 years ahead of the trend with what we did with the Riverfront, reinvesting in the Riverfront and saying, we're not going to let the teams go out to the suburbs where there's plenty of parking, lots of acreage, lots of highways. We're going to develop back in the urban core. We're going to reinvest in the urban core and then move accordingly. And so you look at what happened here. It wouldn't be right, we wouldn't have a presentation, Commissioner Drury House, without the slide that shows 1997. That's where this all started, in 1997. That's what our Riverfront was. So we could have built one stadium or two stadiums, surrendered them with asphalt parking. That would be the beginning and the end. It would have been destination malls that people would go to and then get in their cars and go back home. We reinvested in the urban core. And as a result of that, still have a few blocks to go, but it's important where we are today that we're 20 years ahead of a trend because we already have the mixed-use development. We have $1 billion of commercial, retail, entertainment already developed within the last 20 years. All the major elements that other NFL teams are trying to develop, some have struggled in Detroit with Ford Field, with Comerica. They've tried to develop the mixed-use, hasn't happened. A lot of different reasons for that. Here, it's happened and it continues to expand. We continue to expand our entertainment spaces. Whether we're talking about the Brady Music Center or the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, the only one in the country, which will be open in July of this year, we continue to expand, we continue to activate, we continue to make Cincinnati, this region, instead of being a tier three, to move that up into a tier two. No different than the Bengals moved from where they were in the bottom in 2019 and 2020 to where they are today. No reason it can't, that same thing can't continue to happen. So then we look at what our current landscape is. And as we approach this major renovation, transformation of the stadium, we're going beyond just the stadium itself. It's not about just the seating, it's just not about the concourses. It's about all of those spaces that lead up to the stadium. It's how that complex, which is one of the largest stadiums actually still in the NFL, how that relates to the rest of downtown, how that relates to the rest of the banks so that it becomes that 24/7, 365 life of our downtown and of our region. And so certainly what we heard from this board, greater public utilization is absolutely key. And it's something that both the county and the Bengals will definitely drive to have as part of this overall plan to renovate, to transform the stadium, to carry it for decades to come, decades to come. And that involves all of those spaces, whether we're talking about the lounges, the clubs, the meeting rooms and so on. There's an ability to transform and then use these spaces. It is one of the greatest county assets that we have. And I think in terms of how we do it, the goals and objectives of the county and the team can actually be aligned in doing this. Different interests, different priorities, but there is an alignment as we go into these lease negotiations that says, we're going to meet your objectives, team, but we have objectives that also need to be met. And then if we look at in terms of investment, team also has to invest, NFL has to invest, the county will invest, and we will diversify, we will diversify our funding sources beyond the sales tax fund. We need to go beyond that, both for the capital, initial capital to basically transform the stadium and to maintain and operate. We know that, we know we need to diversify, and we will develop that. The important point is, we're going to do that with our partner, with the Cincinnati Bengals, to develop those multiple sources to fund the transformation, the renovation of this, with our goals aligned, with the objectives aligned. That's, I think that's the intention as we, as we go through this process, to develop the master plan and as we approach, you know, starting the negotiations of that lease with the guidance from this board. I think Jeff, I mean, if you want to pick up on-
Tom, I think, I think you left it in a good place. I think, you know, we have, I think we're in a good position right now based upon the work that we've done in the past, the assessments that we have done, the MOUs that we've, that we've created very recently with the team to, to drive a cooperative approach towards hitting these things as win-win, as Commissioner Reese had indicated. The lease, the capital renovations, the connection with the community, all those things need to work together and they need to be addressed holistically. And that's the process that we're going to be starting here in the very near future. More than anything, I think, and this was a session just designed for the interest of transparency to cover a lot of different things, to be transparent about both the mechanics of the lease, to be transparent about the mechanics of the capital renovation framework that we're entering into, and to also show the public what we're also, what the trends in the league that are going to be influencing these discussions as well. So, so Tom, now I think you left it in a good place. Happy to open it up at this point for any questions.
Thank you. Thanks you both for this presentation. And yeah.
Is that like a call?
We're in, we're in session at 1 o'clock on every Tuesday. Yeah, just tell them, hold up, we're in session every Tuesday and Thursday. At 1 o'clock. But if you want to, but one of the things you can say, we're working for you. If there was any question about us working for you. Thank you for the presentation. I think that one, today, is important to set the direction and tone of how we want to communicate with the public. And it's very important because, you know, I don't want this to be interpreted. I want people can be able to see it and with how much detail they want to get into it, or how less detail they want to get into it. We've got the 50,000-foot level, but then we got the details. And a lot of the taxpayers felt that they got screwed on the details. They went to the ballot, they were given some things that they were told, you know, you're going to get a 30% rebate every year. Don't you want to keep professional sports in Cincinnati? And they moved forward with it. And it wasn't a bad thing. Where they got screwed was when we got to the details. I think the overall concept, everybody agreed, that's what they voted on. But when they got behind the closed doors and the room, and none of us were in those rooms, but we will be in those rooms, and that's what I'm trying to prevent. Now you get down to the real, you got to read the fine print, you got to read the whereas clauses, you got to understand. And that's where the taxpayers felt like they lost in the negotiation. They lost. And we want to make sure that that's not the case this time. So what I'd like to do with this committee, not just bring it forward when we're getting ready to vote a week later, and that's what we're doing today, we're not getting ready to vote on anything, but we're bringing it forward so that- to vote on anything, but we're bringing it forward so that people can digest and they can participate in, in this whole process, not just on what do we want it to look like, but how much do we have to pay for it? Because while I am a huge fan, there are people who will, may never go to a game, but will be on the hook because we own this particular asset. So I just have a couple of things that I did want to put forward on this component, because I'm comparing the old lease with the amendments to what are some of the things I like and some things I probably don't like as we move forward. One is a process question. When we move forward on this, this lease allows for, the current lease we have now, with the Bengals allows for, how many renewals are left?
At the Bengals option, they have five two-year renewals. So, under the same terms and conditions of the lease, with certain exceptions that have been carved out, both within the original lease terms and then in the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen MOUs. So, by way of example, the level-one and future enhancements are not, would not be part of a renewed lease for those terms.
So enhancements, which most are saying, we got to have enhancements. Any differences from this particular lease is almost triggering a new lease agreement, if you will.
Correct.
And the renewals would be as-is. It's like buying a car, as-is, you can buy the car, but if you want something additional, that trump, that trumps a new or an added negotiation, if you will.
Sure, and I think, I think even going back to our negotiations in, in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, when the Bengals could have exercised, frankly, they did provide notice of a level-one enhancement, which would trigger significant improvements at the stadium at the time where the, the county did not have funding or financing available to do that. And also put the county at a, at a, at a disadvantage from a negotiation standpoint because you, you could invest two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred million in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, but you haven't extended the lease. And so if you take taxpayer dollars and spend that kind of, that kind of, of money and don't have a lease extension, and they say, you know what, we want to go to St. Louis, who's still paying for the stadium, you know, when the Rams left, and that's another hundred-and-fifty million. And then we've invested two-hundred-and-fifty in between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two. That could have happened, we forestalled that. What this board has said to us over the last year is, look, hand-in-hand, major taxpayer investment to take care of the stadium in terms of capital repairs, major, major taxpayer investment to enhance it, to renovate it, all well and good, the return on the investment comes, that lease term is extended. The Bengals aren't going to walk out in twenty, you know, lease expires in twenty twenty-six, they have a simple two-year renewal, and they're gone in twenty twenty-eight. With a franchise value that's probably north of four billion at this point, that's a tempting carrot, right? We know that's there. What this board has said repeatedly is, substantial taxpayer investment, we've got to have a return on that investment, number of different ways. Not just an extended lease term, but a lease, but lease terms and conditions that are based on market, that are based on market, that are fair, that are equitable, there's a level playing field between the county and the team. That's what we've heard from you over the last, frankly, two years.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. The lease and the stadium have to be a hand-in-hand. But also, we've got to make sure on the lease side, because in the lease, that's where the money, that's where the, the for-profit money is. On the stadium side, you kind of have a fixed cost, with repairs, obviously, but you have a fixed cost, and the taxpayers kind of know what that cost is. But the lease, there's a lot of other components in there, and this lease has value. That's where a lot of the, the funding is. And in fact, the prior prosecutor indicated to me, this is where the money is, is inside this lease. So you definitely have to pay close attention. And you're right in terms of, there's other teams being sold, but they don't tend to keep the same ownership, even with the St. Louis situation, the owners got screwed. The billionaire gazillionaire owner took it over and screwed the others. And with the other one that's up for sale, I think Magic Johnson, everything, so it never keeps the same ownership group, it's usually some gazillionaires that come in and take over. One of the things I just wanted to highlight is that, for me, I think the issue is, one, we trying to reduce the cost and the risk on the taxpayers. The New Deal needs to reduce the cost and risk. Where it's kind of, it's our stadium when it's time to fix something. It's the, their stadium when it's time to run it and do whatever they want to do. As commissioners, we can barely get in the place. I mean, I'm not talking about games, but just, I remember walking around sometimes, well, you can't get in. And I understand that hopefully it's changed, but, you know, we want to have more access to people if they never come to a game, that they could come down to that stadium and there's something that's going on, that they can participate. And so we've got to reduce the cost and the risk. This lease has a lot of risk on the side, it's kind of lump-sided, in my opinion, because it puts the risk on the taxpayers. And we've got to shift that in the New Deal. The other thing you talked about is diversifying the funding. And you talked about these other stadiums, of course, they're more expensive, but they diversified their, their funding. You talk about Tennessee. Tennessee got five-hundred million dollars from the state of Tennessee. The legislature voted for five-hundred million dollars to help fund their stadium. Were you almost, what, halfway there, almost? Five-hundred million dollars?
Six-hundred million in New York for Buffalo.
So the state have to play a role. We got to see where the state is on playing a role in this, in this game. The other thing, as the county, and I think this is important for us to take a look at, as we're looking at the convention center expansion, and I've been saying this, you know, the city does not have to deal with a stadium, we do, this is all on our shoulders. And as we're asked to do all these projects that come in with the expansion convention center, then they want, you know, someone comes and say, I got to have a garage to go with the convention center, we got to get a new funding model. Well, if you look at Tennessee, they took a portion from the, their county investment came from the hotel motel tax. So if we tie up all our hotel motel tax with a convention center expansion of twelve, twelve square foot expansion, I mean, the city's not coming to save us for the, for the county on the stadium. Why would we tie up all our hands? Well, we might want to use, just like Tennessee did, they're using a percentage of their hotel motel tax to pay for the stadium. That's out-of-town people coming. And the Bengals, they do bring out-of-town people. I mean, I've got to give credit where credit is due. They're bringing people in when we're playing these teams. They're booking hotels, they're bringing fans, we're bringing fans, because not all Bengal fans are from the Hamilton County area, they're coming from all over, they're getting hotels. Why would we tie up our convention center, tie up our money with convention center when we know we got a Bengal stadium here? And that is another funding source that could reduce it off the backs of the sales tax and get it with the out-of-town people tax. And so I just wanted to highlight that in Tennessee, they're using their hotel motel tax, they've got their state legislatures putting in almost fifty percent. And then the other part is the NFL, the G-four funding. Now, I'm a little dicey on this one, because I don't feel the NFL has properly treated our Bengal ownership. I will say that. This last year, we saw them screw us with changing the rules, selling tickets against us before we finish a game, and the G-four requires the owners to vote for it. So that means if we were to get the NFL to put some funding up, the Bengals' ownership would have to go into those same owners that just screwed us. It asks them to vote in support of a loan. So I would like to, when we're having the conversation with the ownership of the Bengals, to find out, how do they feel about that? Because I guess they're the ones would have to go in and make this presentation to the ownership. But Tennessee, they said the owners approved the Tennessee deal and the Buffalo deal, I believe. But the owners themselves had to come in and vote in support of that money, right?
Right, and then each instance, so when we're talking about whether it's Buffalo, we're talking about Tennessee, there, each one of those deals was forty percent privately funded and financed, okay? To get the, to bring in the NFL, the teams need to, to also put up dollars. So if the Bengals put up a hundred million dollars, the NFL, through their G-four loan program, will loan a hundred million dollars that needs to be repaid by the team. But the difference is, it's not coming from the team's pocket, it comes from the visiting team's ticket revenue that they would be entitled to when they come to Cincinnati. And, and that then is paid back basically for the G-four loan, and can also come from the sale of seat licenses, if that, and that's what they're doing in, in Tennessee, by way of example. So, the way the program works, and, and the NFL has to be equal how they apply it, will basically, it requires funds from the team to be put into the mix. And then the, and he, right now, there's a cap of two-hundred million. We believe that that will probably increase as the cost of stadiums continue to increase in terms of, of new builds, and as the cost of renovations continue to almost double over time. So we think that could potentially increase. But that's a, that's a revenue source. Even though that program wasn't the G-four program, there was one available, you know, twenty-some years ago that was not tapped into, that could have been utilized. And, and I think the overriding point here, from the county's standpoint, is no different than how we funded all the riverfront development. That public infrastructure was originally, that sales tax was going to fund everything. It could not, it would not, and there would not be any PTR if we were going to try to fund that riverfront. So what we did, we pushed the envelope on funding sources, and we went to the state, we went to the federal government and said, this is a project worthy of investment. And then we diversified sources. Developers were contributing to the public infrastructure, never happened before in the history of Cincinnati or the county. That's the same kind of approach that we will take in funding this renovation, and also we've got to look at the operations and maintenance expenses. Right now, Paycor Stadium runs seven and a half to eight million a year in operations and maintenance, all out of our sales tax fund. We develop multiple diverse funding sources that we believe we have the ability to do. It takes the pressure off the sales tax fund. It opens that back up. It is a way of trying to keep the promise that was made some years ago when the sales tax increase was passed, but we've got to do it because we know, even when we renovate, the cost of technology, the cost of these improvements will only continue to increase. We've got to have multiple funding sources, and we got to push the envelope to get those. It's not going to be just the sales tax.
Right, I think that's really critical. I'd like to get off the sales tax. I'm looking at Tennessee, they're building a brand-new stadium. Now, we're talking about just upgrading some bones. Or they can get a brand-new stadium because they got the state putting in five-hundred million. They're using their hotel motel tax, I don't see the sales tax in here. And they, they, it says, Nashville leaders will issue bonds for the remaining seven-hundred-and-sixty million dollars. These costs will be repaid by stadium and surrounding campus tax around the area, taxing district only, not everybody throughout the whole county. And then they will have a hotel tax that will help pay for it. And now they getting a brand-new stadium. Now, what I don't want is we're getting bones, aging stadium that's getting old, and we put money into it, and we're, we're using the sales tax, we got an aging stadium and an aging population that's trying to pay for this stadium, and we don't get anything really new, except, you know, we're going to spruce it up a little bit. And then we're still out here with the cost and the risk majority on the sale, on the people. I want to get that off. I want to be able to say, in this New Deal, we reduced the risk and the cost, like you said, operate cost. I'm not sure if it was Tennessee or Buffalo, but the ownership said they were taking out the, the, they were going to take on the operations, they were going to get that off of the taxpayers.
Both Tennessee and Buffalo.
Both of, yeah, we want to have something like that. And then I agree with the diversification of the funding. I'm not sure what, how the NFL works, I'm not up at the NFL, but if all these other people are getting it, but that does require the team to put up some cash.
Right, and I think, I think that's, that's part of what we're looking for, from the county, in terms of approaching this major capital investment that's necessary to carry this stadium for decades to come, that it is very much a partnership, and the team will be a part of that, and that's part of what our negotiation will be in terms of, and that's, and when we looked at all the deal structures the last twenty years that have been entered into, and then the most recent ones, in, in, including our peer markets, all of which involve substantial team contribution and NFL G-four loans as part of the overall funding model. The interesting thing about Tennessee, Nissan Stadium is surrounded by surface parking lots. Part of their dependent, part of the dependence of that state repayment of their bonds is from the development to occur. When they do a bank's development, to try to capture the property tax that may roll off of that, the incremental property tax increases, to be developed years down the line, right? I mean, we've been at this for twenty years to bring the banks to where it is today, and we still have more to go. I'm just saying, that's, it kind of underscores the points about, on one hand, how well we have done to develop this riverfront, to integrate our stadiums, to not make them deserts upon themselves or islands, and to, to develop multiple funding sources. That's the charge that we've heard over and again, over and again from the board, and you have to struggle with it each year, and whether to vote for the PTR, the extent to which, that, that drives home the point of saying, we have to have multiple funding sources. Give us this percentage of an identified funding and financing that happens, that helps to offset being dependent on a single source like the sales tax.
Well, I'm not asking you to answer these questions, but I do want the public to know some things that I definitely will be bringing up, in addition to what I just said. One is, I want to have our, I talked to Jeff already, Mr. Ludo. One, I'd like to get a tour of the stadium itself. I hate to talk about stuff I haven't seen myself. I've been to the games, of course, but I'm, and I've been to concerts there, but I wasn't looking around at the concrete or seeing if the seats are good, but to schedule a tour that, if other board members would love for us to all go together, so we can see these things that, you know, we, we might hear something from them, they say this is no good, we might hear from you all to say it's good enough. I want to see it for myself so I know what is what as it relates to our stadium. And then secondly, I'd like to take a trip and a tour that we could go and see some of these other places. I know we see it on, on the PowerPoint, that's nice, but to go there and see what they've got, what they're doing, not just the aesthetics, but even meet with their, their elected officials, you know, understanding how they utilize it a little bit more than maybe we do. What are, what have they done in terms of diversity and inclusion? I'm not talking about just on the front side of it, but I'm talking about inside. I've had several people tell me about, we had a concession program when we first started, you know, it's in there right at the beginning when we vote for something, and then, you know, two years, three years later, we don't hear about it ever again. But if they claim Atlanta had a better model, I want to go and see what Atlanta model is and sit down with them and see, how do we implement, or maybe we don't implement? How do we avoid some of their, their issues? So I'd like to do that. I know that we, you all have done some things with the Chamber of Commerce, that's great, we got to vote for it. And I want to be able to say, yes, did you see it? Yes, I did. So I'd like, I talked to Jeff about arranging something like that for us to have, get out and have a visit so we can have a full understanding of every aspect of a stadium, from concessions to the, to the, to the restrooms, to handicap accessibility, better connecting with the community. Someone told me Austin was doing more than us, maybe they aren't, or maybe they are. I need to go see. But they were saying it was more open, things to do with their stadium. Our stadium is closed down after the season is over, you know, you can ride up on the concrete, but it's nothing to do. I also am pushing to get, of course, I told you, minimize our risk, reduce the cost on the taxpayers, reduce the cost and risk, diversify funding, and then I also want to get more activity at this stadium. Now, in this contract, it said we supposed to hire a professional. I've been asking everybody, who is the professional that's supposed to get these concerts? We get one a year. I want concerts every... I want concerts every week. I mean, Beyonce went to Louisville on us. I mean, did we go after it? I need to have or do are we in with the people who booked these big concerts to make sure Cincinnati is on the on the on the map? I want to know who's that who's doing it and what is the plan? And how many concerts are we bringing? How many events are we bringing? Are we set up to do multiple events? Are we just set up as a one trick pony? So I do want to, I will be asking those questions as well. And I do have concerns. I like that we keep the costs lower than where everybody else is. But the question is, will these bones be able to hold up? I mean, or will we be back to this in seven years saying that these old bones just can't make it? It's just way too old of a stadium. I just want to make sure what that investment is. I will also be asking about Great American because eventually we got to get with that. And so now we got two old stadiums. What do we need to do? Do we need to be looking at that at this time? Should we be planning for that? I'll be asking that question. And I also will ask the question about covering it. There's new materials out there. If we cover it, do we get more? They got people now saying, buy it, you know, we need to build an arena. Or is it better to cover this thing? And now we got an arena. So I will be asking those questions and I wanted the public to know about those questions as we move forward. And then lastly, I will always ask, will we be having the voters have an opportunity to have a say? So those are the things that I'm looking forward to. I understand Gensler will be coming back to us soon with, I guess, more than bare bones. I guess some bells and whistles.
No, I think what Gensler will be coming back first, I think, to meet with the commissioners to get their their input, your input on kind of expectations. Some of the same things that you've just outlined, that all feeds into along with what the county's team is doing with with the with the Bengals staff as well, with Gensler saying, here are the objectives that the county has. It's not going to happen to change those concrete courses to something else other than a way to get from point A to point B unless there's input that says this has got to be a destination too. And the outside, the outside plazas that are there, right? There's a whole concept that's out there. It's called creating the the third venue, right? The third venue. So you have folks that can afford to go to a game and pay the ticket price. Other people might go to a bar. Other people just stay home and watch it on TV. It's free. We can create a third venue and frankly, the banks is ideal for it that says, what if we have an activation space right within that plaza, all the way around that stadium that has the video boards, that has gathering spaces, that has food and beverage? Maybe that's a separate admission. It's not the same ticket price as paying 250 or 200, but you have a separate admission. Then go back, go back out another, you know, 100 yards and within the banks itself, we have on day of game, a venue that's created that that the county is involved in sponsoring along along with our existing banks district, along with the city and along with the team. Same thing can apply to the Reds. You create multiple venues on the day of game that then become it's it's a huge draw to come down to that area. With the Reds, it's 81 games a year. With the Bengals, hopefully, it's 12 to 14, just for those, right? Not to mention everything that you've talked about saying, this is a community space. If we do this right, we're going to we're going to enhance the fan experience, but we're going to enhance the community experience because this building becomes part of the community, not just for the team, not just for game day. That's the, I think, the overriding factor in driving it.
Thank you. I think we off to a good start. Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a few comments related to this. We're, I feel like we're not quite at the beginning of the process because we need that one last report in from Gensler to kind of level set what we think we need to do by way of maintenance, by way of, you know, the structure itself. But in general, I'm glad that we're starting to talk about the lease. We have a working relationship with the Bengals. We've had a working relationship with the Bengals as is indicated through all these amendments and the MOUs that you referred to. And we've been making the lease better over the past few years, at least that's my experience. And so I do want to distinguish between the relationship with the Bengals, with the ownership, which I think is a fairly good relationship and forward moving relationship and the lease, which is what we're focused on at this meeting. And I don't think any of us like the terms of the lease. They were clearly not to the benefit of the taxpayers. We need to do better in the upcoming lease. But I think there is a real opportunity with the relationships we've built with the Bengals leadership and with the community and trying to understand, you know, what everyone desires in the new lease. I think that's a really important place to start as we get that last report in, we bring the public feedback in, and then we start to negotiate related to the lease, which is really just not that far away. So the good news, I think, is that we've been good stewards of the facility. It's good news that we don't have to build new. We've made strategic investments over the years and this precedes us and and includes us when we talk about some of the strategic investments that we've made to the stadium because in the end, it's a taxpayer asset and it's our obligation as stewards of that asset to make sure that it is functioning and that it does what we need it to do and what the Bengals need it to do. Always, I think, with an eye towards the taxpayer and towards, you know, what the taxpayer has voted for and what the expectation is from the taxpayers. So I think we're in a very good position to negotiate, especially because of the most recent MOU where we made some improvements to that lease. I'm very proud of the work that we did as a as a commission to to get us to this point. And in the relationship was built and continued to grow through those MOUs so that we can come to a common understanding with the leadership over the Bengals operation. But all that said, we need new partners. We need new partners by way of the community who were not included in the conversations many years ago. But we also need financial partners. And so, you know, I look to what others have done by way of getting contributions from the state, from the teams, from the NFL, from all of the partners that have contributed to the financial stack in other cities. And we need to press that that is the expectation here. We cannot completely rely on the sales tax. I do not agree that we should use any other state or I mean county funding, TOT included, to fund this. My eye is towards outside partners that have been partners in other areas that we can tap into to become partners with with this facility. And the state of Ohio has a history recently in Columbus of doing just this. And so I think we need to be very aggressive when it comes to all fronts to see if we can get those partners to come up with the money that we think we're going to need, which from what I hear you saying, it's about $900 million without it. We've got a little bit of a vacuum without the second report in right now, but that's a that's a huge number. And clearly, the county is not going to be able to pay for that all by ourselves. So looking for partnerships and the opportunity to do something different and to do something big at the stadium. I think the renderings were interesting. I love the renderings with people in t-shirts and shorts at a football game because it's just not our experience here in Cincinnati. But I love the renderings. But that gives you an idea of what others are doing and what's possible and what a fan base, if some of that were to be indoors, what that could look like. And so some of the standing room only for folks that can't afford, as you say, the price of a sit down ticket, just, you know, just energizing, as you say, the plaza outside and and utilizing the banks also and creating more energy there. I think it's very exciting to hear have year round space. I've recently been to a number of events at TQL, over at the Reds stadium, some at the Bengal stadium. So there is real opportunity to do year round programming in these facilities and we should do that. I don't think there was enough emphasis in the last go around. I think the emphasis was towards just straight out game day football. And that that's just a dozen days during the year. The emphasis we need to put on this is yes, that and year round programming in that facility so that we could take advantage of the indoor outdoor space that is available to county taxpayers during the rest of the time. And so I'm interested in that and I think you're talking about that and talking about moving in that direction. And I also just don't want to neglect a conversation about the four lots that are left on the banks. We've got some real opportunity there. So as we think about building out the Bengal stadium and the Reds stadium and the lease agreements and all the rest of it, we've got four lots left down there that can complement and be part of the synergy of what we think about both inside that facility and then directly outside the facility. Because the four lots that are left are adjacent to the Bengal stadium. And so I see some real opportunity there. The lot 24 in particular, which is the most developable of all the lots. But you know, in partnership with the city, I I will be pressing that we look at these all these things in conjunction with one another so we don't lose the opportunity to activate those four lots as we are thinking through what we're going to be doing that's new and different with the stadium that that is in front of us today. So, you know, looking forward to big opportunities here. I am wondering, I'm wondering out loud. So this is our first public conversation about the new lease where we've gotten some in depth, you know, ideas about what it might look like with the financial stack, what might be. As we move forward, I would love to do something, some public hearings or, you know, we obviously need this second report in so we know we can level set the conversation about financing. But once we get that report in, then we really do have an opportunity to go out into the public and say, you know, this is what we're looking at. This is what the studies that we've done indicate needs to be done at bare bare minimum in these stadiums. What are your ideas for not only what, you know, that presentation looks like, the delivery of the information, but also what the taxpayers want to see in the stadium? You know, what do they vision? They've been to other stadiums. They've been to this stadium. You know, what what kinds of things could we incorporate within financial reason, of course? But yeah, I'd be interested to know and have some public hearings, not only to give out information, but to have a dialogue, to receive information from the public so they can be more engaged in this process moving forward. So I don't know what the timing element would be related to that. I know it's after the second report, but I want to kind of put that on the radar and hopefully, we'd get a large crowd that this room would not be able to accommodate. So we maybe would have to take it out, maybe to a stadium perhaps. But but just think through how we do a better job of that than what has happened in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that is good and I think we should also incorporate some kind of online. But I don't know if we're there yet, but because people are going to want to know how much it's cost because, you know, some people say, give me a Rolls Royce. I had somebody before say, we need to do this on the stadium. I said, okay, good, you'll pay for it. Oh, wait a minute. Hold it, hold it, you know? So but I do like, I think we definitely should put a, we need a plan of how we're going to.
Kind of a process.
Engage, yeah, a process. We've got the process of we're going to tour it, we're going to look at other places. We got town hall meetings. We've got input from, we've got updates. Here are the dates of updates that we're going to have just so, again, I think that's really good. More we can get people involved, the more transparent we can be. I think that's the way to go.
When is that second? I think you mentioned it earlier, but I didn't lock it in. When is the second Gensler report likely to come?
So it's part of the part of that process. So so we have the capital repair assessment, which said, you're looking at 500 million adjusted for inflation, we're over 600 million in capital repairs over the next 20 years with the majority of that, probably 350, 375 in the first 10 alone, where you're not going to do any one element necessarily of those capital repairs. If the concessions need in the report, $45 million in work, we're just not going to go in and fix those concessions and replace equipment. We want to transform those concessions, which are which has been a kind of a major issue frankly, over the last five years at the stadium. So you want to do both at the same time. You want to be able to say, we're transforming this, we're renovating it, we're bringing it up to date and it will be new. You are going to have new. This is not, this is not going to be, we're just fixing the pipes, we're we're patching the concrete. We're going to transform the stadium so that it looks and feels like we're right with the rest, we're right with the trend as far as saying, we have these gathering spaces. We have meeting rooms and conferences that will complement what we're trying to do with the convention center district.
Right. We had that part, but our question was, what's the date?
So so this, there needs to be the additional input from both the county, which we're we're providing, right? This input that that's being provided from the board, the input from the county staff, from the team to say, here are the additional things that need to be considered as part of this transformation. Okay? So that's one major piece of the master plan. And we also have to have an estimate on what that cost is, right? So that we know, like you were saying, if you want the Mercedes or the Rolls Royce, what what kind of number are we in to do that? And to to look at those different elements? Commissioner Reese, you brought up the roof. You you brought.
But the thing is, we the thing was, we trying to give Gensler, we always waiting on Gensler. We need to get Gensler a time. We want to say, can we get all this before December?
Yeah, no, no, no. I think.
The way he was talking, we got to get this.
No, 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 no. I think I think.
What are we looking at?
But I think to I'll just give you one point because you have brought this up, you know, in prior meetings about, and it's certainly relevant. I mean, Tennessee went back and forth in considering whether or not to put a roof on their building. Ultimately, the decision was made. If we're at 1.3, 1.4 to renovate this and probably another 400 million to put on a roof or whatever else, we'll just build a new one, you know? So that's the important point is here, we're going to have to study that. We have to study that so that we're not just given the seat of the pants answer and saying, that's too expensive because we got to condition this space, not just cover it. We'll study it and come back and say, here's your incremental cost to do a roof, right? What are the benefits and can we get sufficient return on it? Is it is it realistic that we could get a final four? Is it realistic where you can get a Super Bowl? Maybe? I don't know. Just saying to Commissioner Dreehouse's point, additional input from the county team, Bengals team, to Gensler saying, this is what we're looking for in terms of, one, taking care of the bones, two, enhancing renovation, transformation. And then we have to have a number that that we all feel confident in is realistic, right? Because it's all going to happen over a three, you know, it's going to be phased in over three to four years.
No, I got, I got about this last year. So Gensler needs to, we need to give them a time. We can't just get money, money, money.
Yeah, no, I think we, I think we see that coming.
July.
Certainly later this year. I think whether it's July or it's it's fall in terms of saying, okay, we have all the necessary input. We've got the feedback. We know what the objectives are from the team standpoint and from the county. Those are now melded together. Here's what this stadium will look like and here's our number.
That's that's right. So Tom, we're just trying to understand, you know, that's the starting point, right? We can't really go out into the public without that number. We need the number and we need an understanding. So I don't want to belabor the point, but.
Right.
Well, I was just was asking, when we should expect that? And I definitely expect it before December.
Yes.
But hopefully.
Unequivocally.
Yeah. So Mr. Ludo, can you go back to Gensler and tell them we expecting something early, latest, early fall? We got to start giving them some.
Absolutely. And just a quick note and just for some context on Gensler's effort. So this was a very odd time to commission a facility condition assessment and master plan process at a professional sports stadium when you're going into the pandemic and COVID. So I think it is, while while certainly we've talked about wanting the study as quickly as possible, I know from talking with Gensler that it has definitely assisted them to be able to assess the stadium from a from a flow of pedestrians and fans and understand how that stadium works in a fully utilized environment, which they haven't really seen a whole lot of it. Even if you just look back over the past 10 years, the the environment and the flow of people through that stadium is the number of cars coming in is much different today with the team performing as it is than it was even even 10 years ago. So it was very helpful for them to see that and assess that through this through this past season. So that is part of the reason that we're looking at more later on this year than we are early in the year. But nevertheless, the message will be delivered, Commissioner.
Okay. Y'all got to go to Commissioner Dubois. She's been waiting and she's got.
So patient.
She's got about five pages of questions. Commissioner Dubois.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Gensler report was presented to us in what month?
In April.
April last year. Okay. And at that time, I remember them saying that they were working on the master plan. So I heard Jeff say about the pandemic and all of that, but they did give us the Gensler report in April of last year, which we came up, they came up with the 490 million, which make no mistake about it, we've not agreed on the 490. So we now we now have to, as a commission. So we now, we now have to, as a commission, look at, do we need everything that's listed in that report? Which was, as was said earlier, we have good bones, but we need some repairs. Okay, well, that's good. Now, the master plan, from what I had heard, may be as much as five hundred million to include all these renovations and improvements. So I'm asking the question, so now we're up to a million, can we get like Excel sheet that says the cost of repair and improvements and then the cost of a new stadium? What does that look like? I would, I would like to see that. You talked a lot about greater public utilization, and you mentioned more conference rooms, more meeting rooms. I don't consider that more public utilization. That's people for me. More small groups being able to come to the stadium, their stadium, and use it. So, I mean, there are conference rooms and meeting rooms all over the county, all downtown, everywhere. And if it means that we have to pay extra in order to incorporate that, I don't know if it's necessary. The new, you were talking about how the costs are going to go up, and we know that for sure. But I've never seen an estimate of what a new stadium here would be. I mean, I've seen it at Tennessee and all those other. So I don't know if we're just not wanting to address that. I mean, we've thrown out that maybe we need a new stadium, but I've never seen a cost. And so I would love to see that, and I never thought I would, because I was thinking about, well, we can repair, and, but a new facility would last about twenty to twenty-five years, maybe?
I mean, that's, again, we, over time, and this, this is, we have.
Yeah.
It's rare, less, it's less than five stadiums lasted, you know, thirty, forty years.
Okay. So, so my point is that with all the equipment and all of that going up, doesn't it make more sense to build a new stadium? I mean, people have come to me about, put a roof on it. I was, well, I don't know. Let's see if we can, what we can do with this lease, but I'd just like to see a comparison. And then lastly, I'd like to say, one aside, is that we don't have interpreters today. I'm sure there's a reason. I'm not asking you to bring them, but of all the issues that we've discussed, we definitely need them as we talk about the Bengals lease, so I don't, we can make sure we do that the next time. Jeff, okay, I'm just saying, Jeff, but, yeah, it's real important that we have them. That's all I have.
I think, I mean, is it fair to say, just in terms of additional things that we want to look at, clearly the cost of a new stadium, to give a reasonable estimate in, in the timing for that? But that would be, I think that's an acceptable charge. I mean, I'll give you a good example. That's happening right now in Cleveland with First Energy Stadium. The owners of the, of the Browns have gone back and forth. They, they don't like the fact that they're isolated and they're separated by train tracks from the lakefront. They want to cover the train tracks, much like we want to cover Fort Washington Way. But they also are thinking about a new stadium there. I think this, this point about the roof, I think we've got to, let's, we should address it. We should figure out, one, can we do it? We can. Anything can be done from an engineering perspective. What's our cost? One, to do the roof. Two, if we're going to condition the space to be able to use it as an indoor facility, you know, what is that? So I think those are both fair points. I think, and that's something we should study and get, I mean, because there's a cost benefit with everything, right? So.
I think we want to look at all the options. We want, if we got to, we keep saying brand-new is unattainable. We just, right before you, we were in here, McCluskey was talking about, somebody could only get a used car, but then Chevrolet had a deal, you can get a new car. So you kind of want to go in saying, listen, here's what a new stadium costs, and it's got, you know, it's going to last twenty-something years. If we invest in this stadium, we going, we get another seven years possibly. I want, I want to make sure that this, whatever we invest is beyond, I'm just throwing that out, but I want to make sure it goes beyond that, because we don't want to be right back here. We just dumped a lot of money into it, and we say, well, ten years from now, we need a new stadium. So I think Commissioner Dumas has a good point. Let's look at, here's what a new stadium costs, so the taxpayers know we did look at it. Here's what this stadium costs with a roof. I really didn't like the bare-bones piece because we put some false information. I mean, it wasn't false, but it gives a false impression. Oh, it's five hundred million dollars or three hundred million dollars. And then you find out it's to keep what we got already and dust up a little bit. It didn't include what the Bengals need. It didn't include what the commission and the county, people living in the county said we need. It didn't include that. And to me, it was a waste for me because I don't need to know what it means to keep the same stadium without the bare bones. I need to know what it means for us to have something that would become, you know, in competition with the future and will last, won't break down after ten years and that warranty of wore out or is outdated. So I think having those three models, which I thought Gensler was already doing, I think Gensler got hired before I was even elected, and we're still waiting. I know we had COVID, but we done made two runs for the Super Bowl, and we still don't have a, we still don't have a, something to really look at. I mean, if the Bengals can put it together and head to the Super Bowl almost twice, we should at least have something that we can look at that is talking about, we're waiting, we're waiting, we're waiting. And the Bengals are saying, we want to get this lease. And we're saying, we can't do a lease without the stadium, and we can't do the stadium without a lease. So we don't want to be the ones holding it up. So I think the message today is, we'd like to get a calendar of when we will see Gensler with something a little more substantial. We'd like to see a comparison of three layers. If you had a new stadium, here it is. So then all the taxpayers say, oh, let the taxpayers say, oh, no, we can't do that. Or we might look at it and say, hold on, this is going to last thirty more years, and this is breaking down in seven years. Let, let us see it. Then you might say, well, you can't do that, but maybe we could put a roof on it, and then if you put a roof, it costs this much, but you can bring this much. Or maybe you can't. Then we can make a decision. Or you can do an as-is situation, but tell me how many years is as-is going to run? I don't know. Give me no clunker. I need to know, can it run for, you know, we don't want to see this again for another twenty years. So that's what, because we got the Reds coming within that twenty-year period.
Within ten.
With, yeah, within ten years, they got to get something, and they claim their stuff is breaking down. I don't know if it's true or not. So my point is, if we see those three things, I think that the commission would ask.
With all due deference, I think we, I need more than three, because I think I want to see variations on the, the base that we have to do, like maintenance, same, same thing that we have now. I'm not interested in that. I don't think anybody's interested in that. I want to know what, because we have maintained this thing for all these years. It's county asset. I think we, we are in a good space, the Bengals are recognizing that, that investment and saying, yep, we don't need a new stadium, we can do with this one, but we need to do things differently to accommodate year-round, to accommodate a different fan experience, to put in more technology. So I don't know if that's item four, or if it's.
I thought that was item one.
It's a 1A, but, but you, you're saying item one is if nothing new's going to happen.
No, no, no.
I don't, that's, I'm not interested in that. We can, we can get that.
No, we already have that. We got Gensler if we do nothing else.
Yeah, then let's do one, one B.
That's over. I'm saying the new Gensler should be, one, should be what you just said. If you put these bells and whistles in, but with the same building. Item number two is if you got a roof on top, that can we bring in more business? And item three, if we get a totally brand-new, tear it down, let's put something new up. That was the three. We already got the fourth one already. They came and presented to us.
I have to say, in terms of the, the base case is doing Gensler from 2022, which you're not going to get the return on investment to put five hundred million into this building that just takes care of fixing things, right? Because within five, six years, you will have been eclipsed by every other NFL stadium, and the fans are not going to enjoy the experience. And you will be, after investing five hundred million to do that, be forced to build a new stadium.
Right. So the second report is the extra, right? The new, this kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Commissioner? I was just wondering about the new, possible, new, possible new stadium that we not have Gensler do, the new. They did the improvements, they have an investment. And being a part of all of that, and so I'd like to have another entity look at new, which may be somewhat easier, since we have some precedence of the other places that have done it. That, that would be my opinion. I don't think they should be involved in the new, because then they would lose out on the old, so.
And then we look at the numbers. Reduce, I think all three of us have said, we want to reduce that risk on the taxpayers with the sales tax. So we, of course, we looking at funding models that have to, because that has to go with it. I don't want to present this to the taxpayers that we, if you could do a magic wand, and then after that, you tell them the cost, then they say, oh, no, I'm not paying for that. So we need to have funding models to go along with it.
And we heard that loud and clear last year, and we've been working with administration on a chart that said, we're pushing the envelope on multiple diverse funding and financing sources, not just for the initial capital, but to maintain and upgrade this building as well as Great American Ballpark. We have to do it. It just, it won't work otherwise.
Yeah. I think we've got it, and Great American, we got, put a asterisk there, so we kind of have a futuristic look. Thank you. I think this has been very good. People know we're starting, they're not just reading about it. And I think we've all said that we've got to keep the public involved. With that.
Exec session.
Exec session.
I'm asking.